Looks like we're waiting on Ben and Erica. And Marty. See somebody chatting here.
Hey, Dan.
Hey. Sorry, I can't bring my Zoom up all of a sudden. Uh oh. There we go. Jen, I can't quickly type everybody's names in there. But I'm going to. I don't know what to do. I'm not gonna be able to type them all.
What are you trying to type?
Jen was asking for all the names of the student of the month and. There's like six of them, so.
Do we have them anywhere that we can type them in for her?
In an email that Kathy sent me. And I've got way too many screens on, but I will.
Yeah, if you can forward it, I can, I can type it.
Okay, coming your way. Thank you.
Yep.
Kathy, do you feel like you're ready to start bringing students in?
I just got it, Jen. I'll be right there.
A new starting video.
All right. I hear one.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi.
You're probably not Carrie, but are you? What's your name?
Is Genevieve.
Okay. Well, we're gonna get started in just a second. Kathy, any reason why we can't start? I see Damian, Andy. Do we have Jesus on? Or Sammy? Say there's Sammy.
Hello.
All right.
Yes. I'm Sammy.
Okay, I'm just waiting to get the go ahead from Kathy, but. I don't hear. Hi, everybody else?
Yeah, go ahead, Dan. I'm sorry, I was muted.
Okay, no worries. Okay, well, it is so good to see so many kids here on our first Tuesday of the month. This is the month when we honor students for student of the month. And it looks like we've had plenty of good students this month. So thanks for joining us. Last time we did it, we had some technical difficulties, but I'm super excited you all are here to join me. Our first one is Jesus, aka Sammy Gonzalez Ria. And what Sammy's teachers have to say about him is Sammy is always respectful and participates in class. He shows he is listening to the teacher and other students by making helpful comments and asking specific questions. This is a student who truly exemplifies trustworthiness because during distance learning, it is difficult to know if kids are participating and listening, but teachers always know Sammy is tuned in. Sammy, good job. Thanks for powering through distance learning and we'll have a certificate for you to pick up at Town Hall.
Hey. Congrats, Sammy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sammy. Way to be a good role model. All right, moving on, we have Josie Dolgren. Hold on, I lost my. There we go. Josie. I'm looking for names here. Josie, if you're there, can you raise your hand? Okay. We will wait to see if she comes on, and I know Genevieve is here. So Genevieve, you wanna wave to everybody?
Sure. Hi.
All right. Excellent. Okay, so Genevieve, Genevieve's teachers, actually Genevieve, I'm forgetting, it's been so long since I've done this. Do you mind telling us where you go to school and what grade you're in?
Um, I go to Ross Montessori in Carbondale, and I'm in fifth grade.
Okay, and Sammy, I forgot to ask you, what school do you go to and what grade are you in?
I go to Carbondale Middle School and I'm in fifth grade.
Okay, all right. Genevieve, what kind of activities do you like to do?
Um, I'm a big fan of music. I like music a lot and reading. I like reading.
Good. Sammy, what about you? What kind of activities?
I like playing sports and riding my scooter.
Yeah, right on, right on. Okay, well, Genevieve, here's what your teachers have to say. Genevieve is reliable, accountable, and has the courage to do the right thing. Her reputation is solid with other classmates and she is a strong role model. Genevieve is loyal to her family and friends. Nice job. Genevieve. We need more students like you guys, so keep up the good work. All right, we're gonna roll on and Genevieve will have a certificate to you at Town Hall after Thursday.
Okay.
Damian, I think I saw you there. How are you doing tonight, Damian?
I'm doing pretty good.
And how about you? Where do you go to school or grade are you in?
I go to Ross Montessori, same as Genevieve, and I'm in sixth grade.
Okay, and what do you think the best part of distance learning has been?
Um, well. We're not doing distance learning.
At all?
At Ross Montessori.
Okay.
But um, last year it was pretty good because at the end of the year we had to do distance learning.
Okay, so do you enjoy being in the classroom then? Right on. Okay, well, Damian, here's what your teachers have to say about you. Damian is reliable, accountable, and has the courage to do the right thing. His reputation is solid with other classmates and he is a strong role model. Damian is loyal to his family and friends. Nice job. Way to have courage, Damian. That's not always easy to do. So thank you very much. Okay. How about Angie Aguilar? There's Angie. You wanna wave to everybody? All right, so Angie, what, what grade are you in?
I'm in eighth grade. Sorry if the lighting sucks, but I'm in eighth grade.
Okay, and where, where do you go to school?
I go to Carbondale Middle School.
All right, how's distance learning been for you?
Um, I'm doing um, in-person learning, but when I did distance learning, it was all right. It was like, I like learning more in person because I'm a social butterfly, so I like interacting with people.
Okay. So what kind of activities when you're flying around like a butterfly do you like to do?
I like playing volleyball. I really like.
Good deal. All right, well, Angie, what your teachers have to say is Angie is not only respectful to adults and students, but she goes the extra mile to wish people well and make them feel welcome. A member of the pre-collegiate program as well as the eighth grade leadership group, W E B, which is also where everybody belongs. Angie is a natural leader and excellent role model for all students at Carbondale Middle School. Nice job, Angie. Thanks for joining us tonight. Our next student of the month is none other than Andy McMichael. Andy, you wanna wave to everybody? Andy, you wanna wave? All right, there we go. Andy, I know some of this, but for the group, why don't you tell everybody where you go to school and what grade you're in?
I go to Carbondale Middle School and I'm in seventh grade.
Okay, and I see a guitar behind you. Is that, you learned how to play that?
Nope, that's my dad. I play the mandolin and saxophone.
Holy cow, you played a mandolin? That's a pretty hard instrument. Nice job. Well, Andy, here's what your, your teachers have to say. Andy is always respectful. New to Carbondale Middle School, Andy has come into Carbondale Middle School with respect for both his teachers and classmates as well. Additionally, Andy jumped right in and joined the Carbondale Middle School Cross Country Running Club and brought dedicated teen spirit and a respectful attitude to competitions, which were against the club at his former school. We are both proud of Andy and happy to welcome him to Carbondale Middle School. Nice job, Andy.
Thanks.
And once again, we'll have, these certificates will be signed Thursday morning. You guys can come by and pick them up. I'm wondering, did Josie join us? No, Josie?
I've been texting with her mom and they're trying to find the link, so maybe they'll join us in a while.
Okay, well, we can, we can come back to it in a minute, but Andy, Genevieve, Sammy, Angie, I think that's everybody. Nice job and thanks for joining us tonight and we're gonna get started with our meeting.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Oh, and Damian, I forgot to say thanks to Damian. There you are. Okay. Kathy, unless you, unless Josie's imminent, do you mind doing roll call?
Marty Silverstein.
Here.
Dan Richardson.
Here.
Heather Henry.
Here.
Ben Baumfach.
Here.
Lonnie Kitching.
Here.
Luis Iannes.
Here.
Erica Sparhawk.
Here.
Okay, looks like we have a quorum. Thank you. Item number two is a consent agenda, a long one that is. Item A is accounts payable. Item B is trustee minutes from October 20th. Item C is trustee minutes from October 27th. D is a liquor license renewal for the Smithy. E is a liquor license renewal for Main Street wines and spirits. F is a liquor license renewal for 450 Tepanyaki. G is a retail marijuana store renewal for Colorado Product Services. H is a retail marijuana cultivation renewal for Colorado Product Services. I is a retail marijuana manufactured infused products renewal for Colorado Product Services. J is medical marijuana manufactured infused products renewal for Colorado Product Services. K is the Root Eye Water and Power Authority Intergovernmental Agreement. L is the Public Landscape Acceptance for First Bank. M is the Recommendation for Appointment to the Environmental Board. And N is the Employee Handbook and Policies Update Concerning Vacation Time Accrues. That's a big one. Anybody have any thoughts on any of those? Comments, questions, or emotion?
I mean, my only question would just be about the vacation time accrual if, if, I don't know, Jay or Renee or somebody could just clarify that for us a little bit and just how we expect that to impact the budget. It looks like $16,000 now. I mean, I just want a little bit more perspective on that.
Yeah, one of the major issues we've had for years is our three-week limitation at the end of the year of 120 hours. Ends up with a kind of a rush of vacation time at the end of the year, particularly this year with dealing with COVID. We've had a lot of folks who we haven't been able to go on vacation because of staffing issues or some limited windows plus travel restrictions. So we've come forward with a proposal to raise it to the 240, which is a six-week, which is relatively standard with a lot of municipalities and other places I've worked. And to allow a larger carryover without the, the use it or lose it type situation. The buy down would just be a temporary one. Our current policy allows folks to apply for a buy down of vacation time if there's a medical or a home emergency or something. This allows a buy down to 108 hours this year to try to get some time off the books. That would be at the discretion of the employees. But that's a one-time deal. The rest would be the standard buy down only for emergency reasons for the rest of the time, so. Little longer carry forward. That really impacts more our longer-term employees who accrue a higher rate of vacation, but I think it gives us a little more latitude on dealing with the end of the year rush that we've, we've had. Renee, do you have anything else you wanna add to that?
Financially, what you're looking at, Ben, is even if we wind up paying out down to the 180 for a few employees, we're probably not going to be paying overtime because had they been forced to use that vacation time, other staff members would have had to have been covering and probably incurred the overtime cost.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. I guess the main thing I was wondering is if this is a long-term fiscal consideration, but it sounds like it's a short-term fiscal consideration and then a longer term just change in how much people can carry forward if I'm understanding you right. Okay. Thanks.
Anybody wanna make a motion?
Sure, I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Ben, second by Erica. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Okay. I also wanna remind our listeners that we have Spanish interpretation. You can choose the English button, which is under the international button. And if all of our attendees could remember to use as few acronyms as possible, and if you do use one, please spell it out. With that, I am gonna see if there's anybody in the audience who'd like to address the board on an issue that's not on the agenda tonight. Kathy, I didn't see anybody specifically on your list for this. It seems like everybody has a purpose, but do you know of anybody who's planning to attend?
No, everybody who contacted me had a specific purpose.
Okay. All right. Not seeing any hands raised. Okay, and we haven't seen Josie show up yet. Is that correct? Okay. Erica, you don't have any intel on that?
I don't. I sent him the link, but.
Okay. Okay. How about trustee comments? Anybody have any comments? Marty?
Yeah, two. First thing tomorrow, being Veterans Day, I thought it would be right to acknowledge those people who have, men and women, who have served in the armed forces of the United States, the sacrifices they've made and to honor their service because by their serving, they help keep us free and safe. So hats off to the men and women who serve. We acknowledge your service. Second thing. On a less happy note, I'd like to acknowledge the passing of Bill Lamont. Bill was a quite a character and quite, we were lucky to have him. He is a valuable asset to our community. He had a long history. He had participated in athletics at University of Colorado. He had worked on the Pearl Street Mall project in Boulder. Moving, when he and John moved here to Carbondale, he got involved with the Garfield County Library Board and with the process of getting new libraries for all the towns in Carbondale. So thank you, Bill, for that. He also was involved with a regional study group on Affordable Housing, working with Heather, among others throughout the area. Bill gave a lot to this community in terms of time and service. He was an advocate for Carbondale. I've been told that he could be seen at all the Roaring Fork basketball and football games and it was an honor to know him and he will be missed. That's all I have.
Thank you, Marty. As always, you do a great job of capturing things, so thank you. Anybody else have comments? Lonnie and then Erica?
Yeah, just a brief public service announcement to remind the seniors in the community that on Friday is virtual Senior Law Day, which is being hosted by Alpine Legal Services in association with the area agencies on aging. And it'll be on alpinelegalservices.org is where you can log in. It's also in the newspaper, so you can look it up there as well. And some of the topics that will be covered will be things such as wills and trusts, estate planning, conservatorships, scams targeting older adults, and other legal resources will be called out, so. If you have any questions about any of these as we are closing out this year, this would be a good forum to obtain some information. So that's it for me.
Thank you, Lonnie. Erica?
Yeah, I sent around the article that featured Jay and Kevin that talks about the cost and the impacts of climate change, and a lot of that was really coordinated and, you know, brought forth by Colorado Communities for Climate Action. And part of it is leading up to an effort from the Legislative Committee and our, you know, and CC and Colorado Communities for Climate Action in general to put together a bill that would create a funding pool at the state for communities to apply for that's directly for climate mitigation, kind of prep work that might need to get done and/or following disasters that might happen. So it might end up being climate-related, you know, whether those are dealing with wildfires, flooding like Boulder dealt with a while back. And it is rising to the top as it might be one of the priority bills for Colorado Communities for Climate Action since no other groups, groups are wanting to really move it forward. But there are legislators who want to, so I wanted to give a little bit of, that's the reason for that. One of the reasons why they wanted to do that is just to make it understandable for folks that there are real, real costs to dealing with, whether it's drought, wildfires, and other impacts of climate change. So I wanted to give a little bit more context. But I wanna, thanks Jay and Kevin for sharing our experience. I thought it was worthwhile sharing what we've been investing and what we were dealing with a couple of years ago with the major drought and almost losing our water supply, so. And that's all the update my other committees meet later this week.
All right. Thank you. I thought it was a great article and I thought I was spreading the good news, but you had beaten me too, Erica. So nice job. Anybody else have any comments, Ben?
I thought I didn't, but then I remembered that I did attend a Bike Ped Trails Commission meeting last Monday. And they were reviewing some of the input on the Eighth Street Corridor project. The consultant hadn't been able to really compile all the data for them yet because the survey had closed on October 31st and the meeting was the following one day, and so they obviously hadn't had time to compile that. But a few members of the public did attend. There was not a lot of support for anything too ambitious out there, I would say, from the public who attended, and so we'll continue to look at that at the next meeting, but it's interesting that people have been telling us to do something about that corridor for however many years, and now that we put some ideas out there, people are saying, no, 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 don't, don't do anything. Please leave my parking where it is on Eighth Street. That was the main, the main bit of public input and so from some concerned neighbors. So the Bike Ped Trails Commission, I think the main thing for people to know is that, you know, no decisions have been made. All the survey data, all the calls and emails that Kevin has received, everything that the consultants received as well as input that the commission members have received, that'll all be reviewed at the first Monday and December meeting. And I think they might even need one more meeting before they're actually ready to make a recommendation, so I reminded them that we did budget for some pretty significant improvements there, even though we don't know what the recommendation is yet, and I think that's totally okay. So they felt good about that and felt supported by it and they'll continue to weigh all that input. So if any members of the public are really interested in the Eighth Street project, the meeting to attend would be the first Monday and December Bike Pedestrian Trails Commission meeting and it'll be on our website at carbondelgov.org with all the details. The only thing, other thing I wanted to mention is that I, I continue to sort of neglect that Dan asked me to get our student trustee position back up and running again. And I think it just doesn't make sense right now, quite honestly, to make it a meaningful thing. And I think the students have gone through so much transition back and forth and, you know, I think we all know Roaring Fork High School had to close its doors again yesterday after being open for three days. And so I don't know if one more Zoom meeting is what those kids need right now, so my proposal would be that we just kind of wait till things normalize a bit. I felt like the position was much more meaningful and the student trustees last year were able to attend our face-to-face meetings and I felt like once it became Zoom, it was really hard for them to have kind of a, an impact. And so unless anybody feels differently, my proposal is that we, I'm happy to take that on and work with the student council sponsor and all that on it, but all those kind of outside of the regular curriculum activities are just not functioning at their normal pace right now, student council included, so.
Thanks, Ben. Thanks for bringing that back up. The only thing I would say is just unless there's a student who's just dying to participate, as long as they know that we're open to that idea, but I agree, it's, they're probably not looking for more Zoom meetings.
Yeah, I'll get in touch with Grace to make sure because she was our alternate last year and probably if she wanted to do it, you know, that'd be fine. But let her know that there's no expectation right now.
Yeah. Okay. Any other comments? Okay, I just have a few that I would add to Marty's. I thought CoVenture did a great job with their mountain pitch event a couple of weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago now. Seemed to be well-attended and, you know, it was on YouTube and it was just really well-done, so I'm continuing to be impressed with what kind of events we can pull off virtually, so. And the quality of businesses were exceptional, so. I was impressed and congratulations to CoVenture. Sendigo actually helped put on trunk and treat in the parking lot of the fire station and it was an alternative to trick-or-treating, ideally for kids with disabilities, but it was for everybody and the fire department and our police department participated and it was a really fun event. And the parents were just really appreciative, so thank you for everybody who made that happen, as well as thanks to our police department for helping create an alternative Halloween, getting out there and meeting families and stuff. I thought it was great. Very proud of our police force. I wanna say thanks to all the election judges and to Kathy and all the clerks out there who helped make it a success. When people have asked me how, you know, what do you think about the election? My first response is, I feel like nationwide it went off really well. And that's, and I know a little bit that, and there's a lot of work that went into that, so the fact that it went off so well, just kudos to everybody and certainly locally. And if Kathy wanted to speak, she'd probably sing the praises of Jean Albarico because I think she makes our life a lot easier, so thank you, Jean. And also thank you to our Public Works Department and our police for making the outdoor dining happen. You know, we took that down when the time changed. And there was a lot of work that our staff put into making that happen, as well as Carbondale Arts and all the downtown businesses, but thank you for that. Lastly, I'll close. It's no secret that COVID is rearing its ugly head again and has nationwide and it's no stranger here in Carbondale. And the governor is really trying to prevent a lockdown in the future, and he's also giving local authorities deference to how to, how to proceed. In our case, that's Garfield County. In our case, that's Garfield County. But I think our best chance of success is if we really, as he said, you know, we kind of cancel our social uh engagements. We really follow uh the five commitments of washing our hands and not going to work if you're sick, maybe working remotely, uh wearing your mask just about everywhere, uh just makes a lot of sense. And so I'm asking the community to do what you can to comply so that we don't have to shut down schools and shut down businesses. Uh, we know how to beat this and we did in August, and now we just need to get back to that. So thank you, everybody, for your efforts. Uh, and hopefully we can double down and uh keep it at bay for now, so. Any other comments before we move on? Okay. We will move on. Mark, any comments for you?
Oh, I'll save my comments for a few minutes. Thanks.
Okay. Then, without further ado, we can move on to item number six, which is a continued public hearing for the annexation, rezoning, major site plan review, conditional use and vested rights consideration of development improvement agreement, resolution number twelve, series of twenty twenty, authorizing annexation, ordinance number thirteen, series of twenty twenty, annexing property, ordinance number fourteen, series of twenty twenty, approving zoning, site plan, conditional use permits, investing. The applicant is Eastwood one thirty-three LLC. And the location is zero four three zero, Highway one thirty-three, uh right there by the tire shop. So thank you, everybody. Looks like we have a full house. And Janet, I'll turn it over to you.
Great.
Dan, before, Janet, before you get going, I just wanted to make sure y'all know I'm gonna recuse myself. And if Jay or Dan, you could let me know when it's time to come back on, that would be great.
Thanks, Heather.
Thanks.
We're good to go?
Good to go.
Okay. On October thirteenth, the board reviewed this application for annexation, rezoning, major site plan review, conditional use permit, invested rights for the Eastwood annexation property. And the proposal is for a self-storage facility um in the two-acre property just north of the electric substation. After discussion at your October meeting, the board directed staff to prepare approval documents for the board's consideration. And you then continued the public hearing uh until tonight. And so as you can tell from your packet, because this is an annexation, there's a lot more agreements than you're typically used to with major site plan review uh for properties that are already in the town. Um, so I did try to include in my staff report a brief description of the purpose of each of the, the documents. And so, um, you know, a couple of things. You know, I want to remind you, this is a continued public hearing. The act, the public hearing is still active. Um, and then there's some revisions that we'd like to go over in the agreements that we had included in your packet. Um, you know, first I'll go over one that has to do with setbacks and building height. And then I'm gonna turn it over to Mark to go through some of the um ones more related to annexation, the timeline, um development timing. And then um another one, maybe later in the meeting, um, so a little more uh meaty for you to discuss is the monthly rental fee for the self-storage facility units. And the applicant would like to address the board with some of the project updates. Um, so first, one of the changes that um I have are in the annexation agreement. It's on page seven. And what I had done is I had included the actual setbacks. And I think what happened is I had tried to simplify that a little bit too much, and I was only paying attention to the large building in the center of the site. And, you know, when there's three buildings, um, you know, I should have had all of them come into play. So right now I have in there that the, on the south side, the setbacks would be seventy-nine or seventy-six feet. In reality, that's just for the big building. And um it's actually, ew, let's type this wrong. Um, the southernmost single-story building that's closest to Highway one thirty-three, that setback is forty-six feet. And then there's a screening wall that's twenty-six feet. So what, what I'd like to do is revise that agreement. So there's a, it's like a twenty-six point three setback for the screening wall, the forty-six-foot setback for the single-story building, and then the seventy-six-foot setback for the large building. And uh, you know, just to, to make it, make sure it's clear when we're going into building permit. And the only other thing is on the height, just a clarification. When I was putting in the, the height, I had put in twenty-three feet, but I had, I hadn't included the uh height to the parapet. So in reality, that should be twenty-nine feet and the um two smaller buildings at fifteen feet. And I'll, I'll add it, uh, we're not changing things in midstream. Um, these are as the plan showed, the buildings and the site plan. It's just making sure that they're, the agreement reflects what was in the, the plans that are before we tonight for approval. That's it for the, the planning thing. Mark, do you want to go over your revisions?
Sure, uh, let me preface that with just, uh, so the board can know what we've been doing the last couple of weeks. Um, as you can see from the packet, these documents are not short. Uh, there's, there's five of them, and they need to interrelate to each other and be internally consistent. And uh, we didn't get this whole packet out to the development team until middle of last week. So the reality is they had a very, very short window to provide us with input. They got us some comments by your packet deadline, and that led to further discussions on Friday and Monday. So we've been talking throughout, and uh there are some changes that have come out of those discussions that Janet and I support. Um, and I was gonna, rather than go through each and every last edit, my suggestion is that we just hit a couple of the main topics. Obviously, the development team can give you any perspective they'd like to give you, but that we probably look towards, uh, assuming you want to move forward with this after tonight, towards a consent agenda where you can see the final uh documents rather than trying to get every I dotted and T crossed tonight, if that's acceptable to the board. The um, the two issues that I would spotlight for you really derive from the fact that this is an annexation. The uh, you know, usually we're talking about development in town. And with the UDC, we have a deadline of site plans lapse if the development isn't pursued in three years. And that's fine and good. And in that case, somebody who lets a site plan lapse can come back in and reapply in the future. They're obviously in town, they're zoned in town. It's their right to make another land use application. But here, uh, when we're dealing with an annexation, we have an added layer, uh, which is that our annexation agreements, as we've done in RVR and Thompson Park and the Community School and others, almost always have a provision in them that says that if certain things don't happen, then the town has the option of requiring that the property go back into the county outside of town so that any future development application that may ensue would be coupled with the annexation request. So we can do what we've done here, which is negotiate the full package. And so when I handed these documents to the development team last week, I was very mindful of that uh issue. And so we had written in that the, basically the whole project would need to be completed in three years, which we understood at that time to be the development timetable. Um, there was also an interim time period for public improvements, which largely consist of two trails out there, one along one thirty-three and one to run from one thirty-three uh over to the mobile home park uh behind the property. Um, and that those would be done within eighteen months. Uh, on the development side, you know, they, they, we, they had not seen that schedule. And when they got ahold of it, that, that led to a bunch of discussion about what the real timing is gonna be in terms of public improvements and really the private improvements or the private buildings, so to speak. And, and frankly, what's what? There was also some discussion about what's a public improvement that'll be built and owned by the public? And what's a required improvement that will be built, but not necessarily owned by the public? And so what we've done is make some changes to the documents that you have not seen yet. But I think it, to summarize them, basically, uh, what they would do is create a new public improvements deadline for those trails that would be uh run by November tenth, twenty twenty-two. So give them two years from right now to go out and do the public improvements. There's a bunch of things they'll have to do before that, like deal with the C dot access permit. But that would be the deadline to actually see commitment to the project in terms of the trails being done. And then after that, we made a secondary deadline after these discussions of a year hence, so November ten, twenty twenty-three, which would be to complete the buildings and certain private improvements and to apply for COs at that point. Uh, the improvements that we debated, whether they're really public or private, primarily were in the, the gray area that's created by this public art area. As the board will remember, there's a, a, a set of uh pedestals or concrete pads, whatever you want to call them, for sculptures and also some screening walls that will have murals on them. And the way we had sent these drafts over initially, those were sort of lumped in as public improvements. Uh, but we certainly never intended that the town would actually own the east walls of these buildings. Uh, and that was just sort of over, you know, not precise enough. So what we've done after discussing this with the development team is basically agree that there will be a public easement dedicated for the area between the one thirty-three trail and the east wall of the buildings that'll allow the town or CCAH or a future arts organization to get in there and maintain and replace art. But that the items that are gonna be built in that area, the concrete pads and the walls of the buildings are gonna remain in private ownership and the timing of those and, and the lighting for those as well. Um, and that the timing of those is gonna be tied to the buildings themselves. They, they don't need to be built a year early when the trails are built. They can be finished coincident with the buildings, which obviously the walls themselves are a part of the building, so that only makes sense. So that's the major, uh, most of the edits that we've made um relate to those two, two issues, kind of clarifying what the public improvements are versus the private improvements and what those two uh deadlines are. But with those changes, I'm comfortable um that there's an action plan to get this uh project going and hopefully see it to completion in about three years. And if for whatever reason it doesn't happen and the property stays vacant, then the town at that point can decide if it wants to exercise its authority to uh require that the property go back into Garfield County and await future annexation rather than staying zoned CRW um in expectation of a future site plan. Janet talked about the edits to the setbacks and heights that, that uh we are agreeable to as well. I have a red line that, that makes those changes that Andy Corber's request. Um, and while there are other nits and nats, I think that the main issue that's open for discussion, as you all know from your viewing the packet, is the potential fee, the rental fee. We've drafted some language and it has some blanks in it for the board to discuss. And we've had some dialogue with the applicant team. And I know they'll want to share their perspective with the board. But that's what I see as the main um point uh for, for board input and decision tonight. Uh, let's, you know, give the development team an, an opportunity here to speak. But again, it'd be my thought that if we can get input on that and reach some kind of a consensus on that, and if the board's agreeable to the timing and definitional changes I just discussed, that we could bring back uh these documents on consent uh at a next meeting and probably would not need the public hearing to be continued unless you guys have more uh technical questions that you need answered. So that's what I had.
Thank you, Mark. I'll have lots of questions proceed on procedurally how we uh take action if we decide to do so. But uh, why don't we turn it over to the applicant and uh share your thoughts? Got lots of you tonight, so. Doug, I don't know if.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just jump in and give you a, just an overview of what we might talk about here. And then obviously, we're all here to answer questions as well. So thanks for having us again. I, I think just, just to let you know, we have a little bit of an update on um, on access and access permit. I know there was some discussion at our last hearing related to ad, access and maybe some discussion about whether full turning movements could be uh allowed on the property by C dot um until a certain point in time when the, when the north property develops. So our engineer has some information on that. Um, so we'd like to share that with you. And then also get into filling in some of the blanks and kind of continuing the discussion that we had the last time about the rental fee agreement. So those are, those are a couple of our priorities right now. Others on our team may have additional things um and certainly chime in. But those are the two things that I thought we might, uh, we might, we might start with in this discussion, if that's all right with you.
Great, thanks.
Okay. And Colby, I, I see you're on, or you're Yancy, or do you want to just talk about access permit for a moment?
Hi, Doug. Uh, yeah, I don't think Yancy's actually on, but um he was actually coordinating with C dot. And I believe the consensus was that um we can have a full movement at the property until the north property develops. And then at that point, we would be restricted down to a right-in, right-out. And that's what um Yancy's conversation was with uh Brian Killian, the access um control manager at C dot.
Okay, great. You know, and so that's, that's an update. I know part of the discussion was just how, you know, there's not a, a lot of traffic that's associated with this facility. Um, but there was some discussion about um whether it'd be an opportunity or not to, to, to allow that to happen. So the engineers pursued it. C dot said, okay. So it would become, uh, it would be open to full movement uh um until the north property develops, of which there would be shared access to this property. Um, and there would be right-in, right-out only. So that's just an update for, for you guys on that. And with that, if, unless you want to discuss that in any uh more detail right now or just kind of move on, Rob is gonna do some presentation on, on kind of the rental fees and uh, you know, kind of community improvements associated with this project, if that's all right.
Yep. Thanks, Doug.
Thanks.
Welcome, Rob.
Yeah, thanks. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, good, just because I called in via phone, just want to make sure. Um, yeah, I think we just want to go over and kind of recap our concept here and how we approach this um and look at some of the economics before we begin to talk further about the rental fee and how that might shake out. Um, so really, we approached this, we wanted to put our best foot forward when we looked at the site and, and the possible public amenities. And so, I mean, first of all, we, we chose very deliberately not to max out the site. Um, you know, we could have played a game or said, hey, let, you know, let's try three stories and then negotiate down to two. We, we just didn't want to max out height. We didn't want to max out the scale. Um, we've, as you know, and as, as Janet has pointed out a couple of times, there are setbacks greater than, than what's required. Um, and another big piece is, is the bike path. Um, we didn't want to create a, a path to nowhere and just do a trail, you know, out in front of our property. So we, early on, committed to run that north and south for continuous um connection. And I'll get into the sort of, some of the dollars and cents associated with that. I know it's in the packet, but we wanted to highlight it. Um, and then with the public art walk, um, you know, our idea was to create something sustainable. And that's where we started thinking about this, a, a rental fee that could, that could ensure that that would be refreshed over time and it wouldn't get dilapidated and look unsightly. Um, and, and furthermore, I want to clarify that in that parkway, in that sort of private property area, yes, there'll be an easement granting town access and public access, but we plan to maintain um that landscape. So not only, um, you know, are we dealing with the murals on that side, we're also not burdening the town with, with, with the landscape there. Um, so on, you know, it's really important that this is a successful business and venture, you know, for, for ownership and, and the town and all stakeholders. Uh, we've got to remain competitive in the marketplace. And so we've got, you know, concerns. And I just want to sort of step through some of the, the, the capital improvements that we're committed to. And again, this is in the packet. This is uh the, and, and Colby, you can chime in if you have any, any corrections to what I say or, or additions. Um, you know, we're looking at about, an estimate of about three hundred twenty-four thousand to do this work. And I, I'd say the lion's share, uh, and I say this work, that's the bike path and also the sidewalk that connects one thirty-three to the mobile home park uh to, at the west. You know, a big, a lion's share of this really is, is along and adjacent to, you know, that narrow section. I'm sure you, many of you know how that looks today um at the uh electrical substation. So we've got MSE wall and. So we've got MSE wall and retention and, and some stabilization there works and potential relocation of, of utilities. Anyway, it's going to be an expensive proposition, but we wanted that, we didn't want that to be negotiation. We decided out of the gate that that's something that we needed to do to make it a true amenity, you know, for the town. The murals, and this is in, in conversation with Amy Kimberly, and we've had several meetings to coordinate our efforts and, and team up on this. But as I understand it and given her numbers, we've got about twenty-eight hundred square feet shown of mural. And that could range anywhere from twenty-five dollars, you know, maybe to thirty dollars or more per square foot. So we're looking at, call it in, in the range there of seventy to eighty-four thousand dollars for that work. And that, of course, that's something we're going to do and deliver, you know, produce upon delivery of the project. And that's just, it's just another, you know, just wanted to put some dollars to that sort of piece. You know, we've committed to electrifying the building and doing solar. You know, that's doing the right thing and absolutely, as Andy has, has mentioned, you know, we're looking into, we want to be cutting edge and be really, you know, maybe even a demonstration kind of a project, although we're, and so we're not certain how that financial, financially will, will play out for us. But that is a commitment we've made. And kind of lastly, we've got, I mean, as this needs to be, and we understand, I mean, this has to look good. So this is going to be an expensive storage, as far as self-storage buildings go, this is going to be quite costly. We've many upgrades to the finishes, the brick veneer, the metal. I mean, of course, we would not be proposing a standard conventional, old school metal, you know, metal clad building. But I just want to highlight that's going to cost, you know, we're going to be well on the upper end of storage facility construction costs. And then really want to highlight the fact, you know, before we get into discussions on, on the rental fee and a contribution to the town. You know, the fiscal, fiscal analysis shows that this project is low impact and it is net positive. And in there, we do have some figures, it, it may, or may not be on the low side, I don't know, you know, what your, how the town budgets this. But the, you know, maintenance of that side of the bike, bike pathway is included in that, so that's already factored in. And as I said before, we're taking care of the landscape and everything, all the, you know, maintenance on the, on the private side. So really, you know, anything and over and above that is gravy for the town. You know, we're not needing to dig ourselves out of a hole and, you know, trying to mitigate for impacts. We feel that, you know, this is net positive, and I mean, it is. And I think, I mean, we couldn't have a lower traffic impact, and we've talked about that. And certainly our, our, you know, we don't know for how long the full movement will be in place. But we anticipate that it very well could be during the lease-up period, the first couple of years. Again, that's speculation, but, I mean, that's a big benefit. And, you know, discussions that we had about impacts to Eighth Street potentially, and we feel that, you know, that, that's really going to help from that standpoint. So I just wanted to highlight, and, and our team can chime in if I've missed something, but I wanted, you know, to some of the, on, you know, the financial side of these improvements and, you know, the cost to us, you know, before we, we dig deeper into the, into the rental fee. And we understand that is intended to sort of beef up what otherwise, you know, we have a sales, there'll be sales tax revenue, but it is on the, on the leaner side, given that, given the, the nature of the business. But just wanted to recap some of where we came from in the concept here, putting our best foot forward, doing the right thing. And, and we thank you, we know that you, we've been recognized for doing such, so we thank you for that. And I may turn it back to Doug, just to, you know, continue the discussion and where we go from here on, on that rental fee.
Sure, and Rob, do you want me to just kind of lay out what our plans are for the rental fee?
Sure.
Yeah, so we, we've looked at the rental fee, you know, we had talked with Amy Kimberly in the arts, the one percent for the arts, one percent for town. You know, as Rob said, we probably have, you know, approximately four hundred thousand dollars worth of community benefit improvements associated with the project. We, we really do want to stick with that two percent. We feel like that two percent will keep this project competitive with other projects. Going beyond two percent means that this project could be compromised because we're, we're, have a voluntary percentage that we're providing to the town that goes beyond what, what other folks may be doing. So I, I think that the key that Rob was trying to raise, the point that Rob was trying to raise is that there, there is community benefit associated with this. We are trying to make sure that, that community benefit is something that's meaningful to the community. While this two percent is still meaningful to the community, it's not the only, only benefit that's being provided. And for the most part, this really is, is not a, a big impact, especially if we can keep the turning movements open at the intersection, not a big impact to, to roads and, and other services provided by, by the city. So we, we want to keep the two percent in place, we want to do it perpetually, rather than offering a higher rate with some kind of sunset over a number of years. So the two percent is something that we commit to perpetually. We'd be able to provide that to the town and continue to work with the arts on that. The initial, while there may not be a lot of income based on that two percent in the initial, initial lease-up at times, all of the art, as Rob had said, would be, the murals will be painted, those will be paid artists doing those, you know, installing those benefits to the community, paths for sculpture will be provided. So all of that will be provided upfront beyond the two percent. But that two percent will then become kind of what maintains that project over time, at least one percent of that and the other one percent of the town. So it's kind of a long-winded version of telling you what, what the approach is. But beyond that number, we just really wanted to get at what we're trying to provide to the community besides storage for, for locals in Carbondale. But what we're trying to provide is community benefits and an opportunity for art within the project. So that being said, Rob, if there's anything additional, I do want to clarify in the agreements that I think you've seen. I think there was a, like a twenty thousand dollar minimum that was included in that. We, we do not want to include a minimum number, knowing that that twenty thousand dollar estimate was conservative for the project and that that will raise with time, you know. So as, as more units get leased and, you know, prices may change, you know, that, that two percent has the ability to, to go up in the future. But we, we did not want to have a twenty thousand dollar minimum associated with, with that voluntary two percent to the town of Carbondale. So Rob, I don't know if I covered it all, if you want to, if you have anything to add, feel free.
No, I, I think that's great, Doug, and I think the way we, we see this rental fee is, I mean, it is a bit of a, seen as a pass-through to the customer and, and we see our, our customer as, as a local. So we want, we don't want that to tip the scales too much and be an overburden for, for the locals. So that's, just wanted to add that little bit.
Thanks, Rob.
And with that, you know, I, I do want to support, you know, we've, since we, since we received all of the agreements, we've really focused mostly on annexation agreement and development improvement agreement, but have been working with your staff, you know, since we received it, been very good interaction, so just wanted to, just want to let you know, it's not like it's been setting aside for a while. You know, we, we've all been working and interacting with, with staff about it. So would like to, would like to move forward, but as, as Mark had said, there, there, you know, a, a few details that we're still working on. And they're really just clarifications in the documents to make sure that they're all consistent with kind of the plans of this team and, and consistent with all the other documents in the package.
Thanks Doug, thanks Rob. And so I take it that you guys agree with everything Mark said in the process and so we're all on the same page? There's nothing that you guys are at odds with? Okay, great. So let's turn it over to the board for questions of the applicant or of staff. And then after questions, we'll open it up to the public and then bring it back to the board after that. So any questions from the trustees? Seems like the, the main issue of substance is the, is the fee, but there's also some new things, so Ben?
Yeah, thanks everybody for all these, all this work that's gone into this. I saw Mark Hamilton on my block the other day and asked him what he'd been up to, and he said he'd been up to this for a couple of days. So I know a lot of work has gone into this since we last saw you, and I appreciate that. I'm their liaison of the Bike Pedestrian Trails Commission, so I always try to make sure that I'm looking really closely at the details of those agreements. And Mark, in all your goings over of this, are you confident that we've got security in this and, and language that, that trail that's going to be off the property, on the south side of the property, you know, going down to the Rafta Park and Ride entrance, that it will be constructed to the same specifications that we're expecting? Like, as I go through it, I, I can't find anywhere where it says that has to be ten feet wide. I see that on the property site plan, but I don't see it for off the property. I see that it has to be asphalt, I just want to make sure little details like that sometimes come up later and we say, oh man, we didn't, we didn't specify that. But do you feel like we've got enough assurance in all this that that's going to be, I think what we're expecting and what we would all hope for is a consistent bike path, just like the bike path south of there and the bike path that goes through the property?
Ben, that's a fair question, as currently drafted, that width is not in there. And it just refers to the plans and specifications by reference. So assuming it's shown correctly on those plans and specs, it's in there, but not as directly as if we simply add a sentence that says ten feet width all the way, the distance that you're talking about. So whatever the board would like, but I don't think that is specifically called out the way you just did.
Okay.
Yeah, we, yeah, sorry. We talked about this at the, uh, project on the roundabout. And I think at that time, there was a discrepancy in the drawings, and I think we agreed that if it's shown on the drawings, it's a, it's a contractual agreement, so I think we felt comfortable at that time.
Yeah, that's fine, as long as it's on the drawing somewhere. I just couldn't find, it's a big packet and I just couldn't, I, I flip back and forth and I go to attachment this and appendix that and exhibit this, and I can't quite track it. So I just wanted to make sure somewhere in there that if some future planner or attorney or board member is looking at this when it's actually happening, that that's just clear and that it doesn't get sort of squeezed down or something. But if you feel like it's like that in the, the plans that are in here, I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah. And can you confirm that that's on the plan specifically? I have not checked that for tonight.
Yeah, Colby's on, so I might ask Colby to do that because he's, he put those packages together.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's, it's on there, I don't know that the ten foot is called out as we move south, but I'll, I'll double check that.
Yeah, and, and Ben, we can also update those drawings to make sure, because there will be exhibits to the, you know, to the annexation agreement and the development improvement agreement. So we'll make sure that those are called out as ten feet. And then if, you know, if Mark wants to put it in, you know, as, as something in those agreements, that, that, that would be appropriate, it seems like.
Okay, thanks, yeah, that's something I'd just like to see in the final one, that I think it's really clear for on the site. It's just, I don't see a plan in here for off the site, so just want to make sure that that doesn't get squeezed somewhere down the road. That's all I have.
Okay, other questions of staff or the applicant? Luis?
Sure, I think Lonnie also had a question. Thanks everyone for the great informative application on the packet. I had one question and maybe it's more from Mark, but talking about the fee and the two percent. Once this is developed and, you know, it starts in place, if this project were ever to be sold, is this, can this be then, would this be assigned to a new owner as well? So there's survivability in that?
Yes, as, as long as it's operated for self-storage units, yes, the, the fee would pass on to successor owners. This agreement's recorded and it stays in the records until it's released. So if, you know, if the project goes dark and there's no rentals going on, unless there's some alternative, there would be no fee. But as long as there's rental units, no matter who owns them, there would be a fee.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Luis. Lonnie, sorry, I didn't see your hand, do you have a question?
Well, that's okay, I, I have bad light here, so you probably can't see me that well anyway. I, no, I too appreciate the thoughtfulness that went into incorporating the custom community benefits based on, obviously, a lot of our culture. With that, we've had some opposition expressed from the community over the potential appearance of the town's main entrance. So I'd like to make sure that the funds are sufficient to keep this project well-maintained, given its location. And so I just crudely tried to back into your twenty K nut based on your five ninety units and what I know of the, you know, the general cost of rental space in the area. And it seems that you'd need to have at least a seventy percent occupancy rate to make that. Do you have confidence that that can be achieved fairly quickly? Or what's your, from a proprietary standpoint, what, what do you guys think would be realistic? Given, you know, that just back of the napkin math that I quickly did?
Yeah, I can, I can try to answer that. I mean, certainly our goal is to, when we talk about stabilization, you know, we're looking at more like ninety percent. And industry standard, as I understand it, is leasing up about four percent of the space per month. So based on that, and this is just arithmetic and, and market conditions, of course, can, can come into play. But, you know, that's about two years of lease-up time. And that's, you know, getting to that sort of a ninety percent. So I think we, you know, to, and to break even on a project like this, you know, I think it's, it's somewhere around sixty percent occupancy. So really, I mean, we wouldn't be spending the money or really working this hard at, at this project if we didn't think we could, you know, surpass seventy percent. So certainly, our, our goal is, is to be much higher.
Okay, thank you.
And, and if, if lease-up takes, takes longer, it takes longer, but I think, I think we'll get there and, and, and we're confident.
Okay, and then, you know, just minor detail, I mean, the square footage of your, your five ninety units, are, are they eight by tens or? What, what are they?
You know, it's, it's a mix and the plans do, the drawings do show those, those unit sizes. What we are trying to do at grade and, and what we think we have working in our favor is, is to provide some, you know, a lot of good drive-up space and with, with tall, clear openings. You know, sort of ten foot plus height, you know, where we can attract sprinter vans, small RVs, small boats, that, those kinds of, that other, other facilities may not have. And that's one of the benefits in our approach of going two stories versus three. You know, if you do a three-story pressed up against the height limit, it squishes everything down, of course. So, and then, and then on that main level, there are smaller spaces. I could, I could turn it over to Andy to talk more specifically. I know on the second level, we have more, smaller unit sizes, but we've got a real range, five by five all the way up to, what, ten by thirty? Andy?
Okay, no, that, that's fine, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Okay, got a thumbs up, so I'm not that far off.
Great, and Erica, before you go, just for the public, if you would like to speak on this issue, you can go ahead and raise your Zoom hand and we'll take you in order. So that'll be coming up, but Erica, go for it.
Um, I think it's kind of a follow-up from Lonnie's and it might be for Mark. So this two percent fee, I guess one percent that goes to the town, we don't have to use that for, like, maintaining this property. I mean, I think it was either, one of them just said that, sorry, I'm forgetting, it was either Doug or Rob who said they'll be taking on the maintenance for the landscaping. So then we would have some, it's not like we have to be looking at it like that ten thousand has to be offsetting our town costs. We could put it into capital, our, building our tiny capital fund, ten grand at a time or something, but is that right?
Yes, and that's my long-winded lead up was trying to get to that, that you know, this project is net positive fiscally and, you know, each and every year going forward. A little deduct is included in that analysis that is meant to allocate some funds to the bike path that we're building predominantly in the right of way. So the the short answer is no, that you don't have to out use those funds to maintain any improvements that we have undertaken related to this project.
Mark, you agree with that?
The draft agreement in your packet on page 82 of the packet, page 10 of the agreement has a blank for how the rental fee proceeds can be utilized by the town. I did not purport to fill in what they could be used for, but they could certainly be that could be broader than just maintenance of this particular property or this particular trail or art, if that's what the board would like.
Okay, that was my follow-up question was what page was that on? Because I I got lost in the packet.
Did you get that?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I see it now.
Page 82, which is page 10 of the draft agreement.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, I will open up the public hearing to the public and see if there's anyone who'd like to address the board on this particular application. I'm seeing lots of participants, but nobody raising their hand. Going once. Going twice. Okay, we will close the public hearing to the public and bring it back to the board. Lots of things to consider. Main one, as we talked about, is the fee and as Doug alluded to, there's the notion of a minimum. And regardless of whether there's a minimum, there's the fee applicants asking for it to stay at 2%. When I spoke at the last meeting, clearly the the off-site traffic impacts were kind of a new. I hadn't thought about it really prior to the meeting as as carefully as I did and and the fact that it can be full movement certainly mitigates that. So that that's great. And I really appreciate the work that went into addressing that as well as updating on that, updating on this. I still worry that with annexations, it's it's pretty hard to overestimate what the impacts are. And so I get a little leery. I recognize that 8% is way too high, especially with assuming that the full movement intersection can exist for for some time. But I'm curious if the I believe two more than 2% is warranted, but I'm curious to see if the board had has any thoughts on that. Doesn't seem like it.
On the percentage amount?
Yeah, whether it should be higher than the 2%.
I'm comfortable with the 2%.
Okay. Anybody other than me feels strongly that it should be higher than 2%?
I I think I kind of put the stake in the ground that, you know, you've got to be at over 70% capacity pretty quickly. So if there might be a foreseeable obstacle with that, then maybe we can consider something a little higher to begin with and then step it down once they've made their achieve their occupancy rate. That's going to be net positive, but you know, at 70% minimum, then 2% will bring in what they've projected for both the town and the arts district. Again, having done my crude math.
So so if I'm thinking about it correctly, that could speak to the merits of a of a minimum and that minimum could have a sliding scale. But does anybody on the board feel strongly that we should have a minimum amount? So to Lonnie's point, regardless of how much how occupied they are, that there would be a minimum amount they'd contribute every year.
Dan, I'm having a hard time coming up with like a proposal, but I feel like if you have a proposal, I'd love to hear it and I'd be interested in discussing it. I don't. I mean, I just don't know what what number to talk about here.
Yeah, and I don't. Sorry for being ambiguous because it's true that we don't have data saying this project is going to have impacts of this much, so therefore it generates this fee. And and I should also say that, you know, Rob, to your point, I fully understand that and I appreciate the fact that you put your best foot forward and that it is a pretty fantastic project. So I'm really not trying to bleed you guys to death. I'm just trying to look out for what I see as the town's impacts. But I also understand that you guys are, I assume you're being straightforward and saying 2% is where is what we can afford. And I it's not my intention to kill the project. So Ben, I hear what you're saying, but I also I think I'm I'm one of seven. So if everybody's comfortable with with no minimum and 2%, I'm not going to fight it. I just and I don't have a strong rationale to say it absolutely must be more than that. My gut just tells me the impacts will be more than that, but that's okay. There are other projects in town that aren't annexed that may or may not cover their costs and that's the way it goes. So I'm not. Yeah, Erica.
Well, I think so I'm also okay with no minimum. And for me, it comes down to that they in this project doesn't hinge on it being annexed, like it could be built on the county property.
Sure.
And, you know, I appreciate and I am, you know, I know the folks pretty well who, you know, sent us comments concerned about how it would look for our entrance. But I mean, I think it's a nice looking project. I went out and checked out the site again just to, you know, I did a couple of years ago when we were looking at another annexation proposal. And there's just so such a minimal opportunity on that site. And there's a lot, the improvements with the bike path. I mean, I use that place next door to get my tires and I have walked along there in the winter after dropping my car off to get back home. And it is annoying and that that investing, the the fact that they want to invest that, you know, 324,000 or whatever in those upgrades, that'd be really tough for us to to cover and, you know, CDOT would be resistant as part of a future project. So I do see that as a huge benefit to our community. So that's where I'm coming down on it. I know we need to, you know, look out and make sure annexations are net positive for the town. But I do feel like they're going above and beyond in so many ways, so I am comfortable with it. And I think it's really cool that 1% goes to Carbondale Arts and 1% comes to the town and then we can figure out what we want to do with that, those funds.
Okay. Thank you, Erica. So it really sounds like we're ready to drill down into on page 82, section two. It sounds like there's support for a 2% fee, is what I'm hearing. And there's no minimum, so we would strike that language, I'm assuming. And then it talks about the proceeds of such rental fee assessments shall be utilized by the town to blank and or procure place, maintain, repair. Mark, any suggestions if we want as much flexibility as possible? Do we need to change that ad language or or not?
Well, be nice to have Renee here. Maybe Jay could weigh in on this from a public finance standpoint, but my my inclination would be to have a a broader reference to related art or trails purposes. And so do the two things that are associated with this and that 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 could be throughout town, not not just on this property if there is excess funding available, but it's more of a legislative decision than a legal one, but I would encourage you to put something in that blank that's broader than just the property in the event that there's excess funding.
Why wouldn't we want to just eliminate that sentence? So we're not bound by anything to use that fee?
I like that there's a nexus to why it's being required. I don't think an annexation that's absolutely required if you'd rather just have it be akin to a tax. But I I like tying it to the impacts that it's associated with. Jay, do you have a perspective on this?
You know, I think we should leave it open and maybe tie it to uses that we would be using our sales tax dollars for, as this is somewhat of an offset for a property not producing a large amount of sales tax. So I to me, that would be the nexus which would open it up further for town use.
Okay, so we basically we would then delete this use of proceeds. We'll just say or say it and you can maybe utilized by the town for any purposes that sales tax proceeds are used for.
Trustees, anybody have any problem with that?
No.
I agree. I was thinking it should just say for the general fund.
Okay.
Like we've got enough funds that are restricted and it becomes, I think, really complex at budget time sometimes. So I don't see any reason to restrict.
One additional observation I did not mention earlier in my spiel is that in our talks with the development team, I the red lines that we have that you have not seen yet include a little more language here about the the owner of the rental units providing the town with a monthly accounting of how many units are rented and what the rent is per unit so that you can basically audit on an ongoing basis, the the required fees. And so that there's a sentence or two on that that would be included in a final document. I want to know if that's okay with everyone.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense.
And I, Dan, I had one more comment to add to this. This is Ben Genshaft. I'm the attorney for the development team. Mark, we didn't talk about this directly, but I just wanted to raise it so that it can kind of be in the mix with with any edits going forward. And it, I think it should go in this section. It may not have to, but one thing is with the art and installations, like obviously, this is totally for the public and everything, but we do want to make sure that we have some kind of check just in case there's. I don't know how to structure it exactly, but in case there's something offensive, some kind of art that wouldn't be consistent with what would be expected to be on the building and stuff. I think everyone can understand that. And it's you know, we're not trying to regulate exactly what type of art goes on there and it or anything like that, but just some kind of outside check to make sure that, you know, we don't want to get into political and that kind of stuff. So I don't know, Mark, if we can talk a little bit more, we can just give some general direction here. But the developer would like some kind of of, you know, veto power or something if if there's some kind of offensive piece of art. I mean, I know that's really hard with art, but I think everyone gets what we're we're saying here.
So hard with with legal limitations on the governmental ability to regulate content of speech, Ben. So that's one of the reasons I didn't include your requested veto power. I understand that that as a practical reality, I don't think anyone's going to want anything that's obscene. And there's probably other categories, but to to limit it and define it is hard and to give a private party authority to pick and choose is also hard. So I guess we'll just have to continue that discussion offline unless Jay, if you have a thought or Dan, if you want to provide some more or anyone on the board, provide us some direction on what you might want to see. But that's one of the reasons I didn't include specificity on that point.
And I I understand that completely, but that's why we can maybe come up with something that that again, it's no direct control. It's nothing, you know, no one's trying to be overly selective on the art or anything like that. It's just kind of you know, that's a very, you know, public space that that mural area will be seen by everybody driving by. And so I think for all of our purposes, you know, we we want it to be consistent with the entrance to Carbondale and everything else.
But you know, just real quick, I think that's really should be included in your arrangement with Carbondale Arts. We do not vet public art except for sculptures. So I don't think it belongs anywhere in a public agreement. It's more your agreement with Carbondale Arts to administer the program, which is not part of the town of Carbondale.
And I can I can speak to that discussions that we've had with Amy and Andy's been a part of. That was brought up.
Rob, we just have a long meeting and are you guys comfortable with with what Jay said? That it would be discussions with Amy and not in a public.
Sure, sure.
Okay, great. Okay, Mark, is there any other specific direction or maybe guide me through? I feel like, well, actually, let me back up. Trustees, are there any other questions or or thoughts before we try and wrap this up? Seeing none, Mark, can you guide me through procedurally what you would like, how how you would like us to act, given the changes?
This is my suggestion, but by no means is it compulsory. You guys get to decide to tell us what to do. But I think given the the red lines that we have that you haven't seen yet, that my suggestion would be that your the board go ahead and close the public hearing and you can continue this to whatever date makes sense on the calendar. But unless something unexpected happens, I I think we're close enough that it's likely going to be staffed just saying this is a consent agenda item and not everybody has to attend unless the board would like it to be everybody ready to have continued discussion. It's really up to you all, but that that's how I I think we're very close.
So we wouldn't even need to make a motion if we continued it and it went on to, I mean, other than approving the consent agenda, we don't need any specific motion on.
Well, if you're going to keep the public hearing open, so part, you know, the public or even the applicant could provide more materials, we would want to have a date certain if it's just to bring back the documents. I I there's no, just go ahead and do a date certain anyway and we'll take final action on that date, I think.
So I'm still unclear. Are we? Should we be making a motion to approve it or are we continuing the entire hearing?
I I think I would make a motion to direct staff to bring back documents approval containing the changes discussed tonight for action at that future date that you're not proving until you have those things.
Okay. And would we be doing that on a consent agenda or would be a regular action item?
I think that would depend on how it shapes up the the week of that packet, but I'm telling you now that I would expect that it can probably be done on a consent agenda unless Jay or Janet feel otherwise.
Okay.
And just real quick, I think you'd be good to continue to the 24th of November and not bring it into the budget hearing in December and try to have this wrapped up at that point.
Okay, do any of the trustees or applicant have any issues with us continuing it till November 24th?
I guess I would just have a just want to try and clarify that you feel like you're going to have a quorum. It's Thanksgiving week and we're just trying to make sure if it's continued that that we we have a that you have a quorum. I don't know if you can do that now or not, but you know, just wanted to try and ask.
Thanks, Doug. Good thinking. And also I wanted to bring it back to to I I'm understanding is the board is supportive of everything we talked about with obviously the the edits that Mark referenced, not including a minimum 2% fee and and eliminating any restrictions on how we spend that fee. And okay, Janet?
And kind of what I would do with motion unless, you know, Mark or Jay disagree, is make a motion to close the public hearing and direct staff to bring the final approval documents to the November 24th hearing with the changes as discussed tonight.
Okay.
So to close the public hearing.
Okay. And to Doug's point, is anybody planning to miss that meeting? Okay, not going to guarantee it, Doug, but it looks good. Okay. All right. So I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing and continue this until November 24th.
So moved?
Okay, Mark, Janet, you comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay. Motion by Erica, seconded by Lonnie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those say no? Motion passes. Okay, third time's a charm. We'll see you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, guys.
I'm going to. I'm going to keep us rolling. Moving on to item number seven is the purchase of the Third Street Center solar system from RC Energy. Jay? Jay probably has to kick some people out.
Yeah, I'll kick some out down the line here, but, but to keep moving, the town of Carbondale, we have one last remaining power purchase agreement. That we have not purchased on our properties. And this is one of the original ones. This was at the same time as we did the solar array on the rec center when it first came online. And so this unit is on the Third Street Center. It's a lease through the town of Carbondale. We, in 2016, we purchased the panels on the rec center from RC Energy. And we did not complete the purchase of these panels and the Third Street Center has actually been paying rent. Or paying the power production, not rent, but paying for the power produced directly to RC Energy through the, the last, last four years. So there's a buyout provision which would go into place in the spring. And so we started working in gyms here from RC Energy. We started talking a while back about what would be the best way to approach it. And there was a few options presented to the town, including financing, the buyout. The numbers seem to have worked on the financing. As we dug into that, the interest rates for financing the purchase was, was quite a bit more than what we're actually getting in the bank on our investments right now. And so we came back with a proposal to, to actually purchase them. We would build the Third Street Center for the power produced, which is similar to what we're doing on the other power purchase. Agreement that we did on the Third Street Center a while back. And they would be paying us for the power to produce. We deposit those funds into the capital fund. Payback times nine years on, on this investment. There's a basic fiscal analysis in there from Catherine Rushton from Clear, who is kind of our solar guru. And actually helped put together some of these power purchase arrangements back when we first started working on this. And our recommendation is to move ahead and use capital funds to purchase this array. Go ahead and build the Third Street Center for the power produced. The, one of the issues associated with that is that we would be spending down our fund balance a little bit. And with this would potentially take us closer to that 70% level as we close out the year. There's some, still some things we need to look at as we move forward to, to closing the year out. So that's just a quick overview. But it, it makes sense and it's the last remaining one out there. And it, and it's interesting as we look at our investments in solar and we're seeing the next agenda item, agenda item is a solar issue. The models that we put together years ago to get solar moving in town, you know, may not be the models that we're looking at as we move forward down the line. And the power purchase agreements, I'm not sure we'd be looking at this financing mechanism again unless. The tax benefits change for them. So I'm not sure if Jim, if you have anything else to add on this?
I think you provided a, a, a good overview. One thing I would add is that it's a, it's to the benefit of the town to purchase it now. With a little over eight years left in the SRECs. And in your analysis, you could see a stream of SRECs that will come to the town. And help defray the cost of the system. This is one of the older systems, and so these are generous SRECs from the earlier days of Excel's descendants. So that really helps, as I said, defray the cost a bit and make it a better return for the town. The purchases as outlined with Catherine's analysis, you know, it makes sense. There's a, you know, a net return there. That's, that's good for the town. One of the other elements of this that you'll see in your packet. Is that we are including inverter warranties. So the most critical piece of keeping the system running are the inverters. And these are SMA inverters. They're a, a, a good reliable company. And we extended the warranties on a group of inverters. And with that package, we're able to get a very good price for that extended warranty. So we're extending or we're offering that, that warranty to the town at no cost here. And that's going to provide additional protection for the system up for the next about eight years. It's in the packet there. Then we were careful, and I think Catherine saw this in her analysis, to include. Cost for operations and maintenance. And an inverter replacement later down the road. But, and then also a decommissioning is included in our fair market value analysis. So in summary, a good, good time for the town to purchase it, good value, good value. I know this is what the town has been wanting to do is to own, own the systems. And hopefully we have a, a good package here that works for you.
Thank you, Jim. Having just replaced an inverter, I can appreciate the extended warranty, so. Any questions of Jim or Jay? We're moving to buy in on this agenda and renting on the next. Okay. Just my only comment Jay is, you know, about the reserves and I think this is, this makes sense. And that's why we have reserves, but I would. I'm not saying go back and redo the budget for 2021 because I know we're not going to be able to get up to 20, to 75% with this budget. But let's not lose sight of what we'd like that target to be. With that, I'm trying to see where the motion is. There's a recommendation, recommended motion. On the memo page, 137.
I think I've got it here. Move to approve the bill of sale from RC Energy and authorize the town attorney to review the assignment of the RC Energy Excel contract to the town of Carbondale and the mayor to sign it.
Second.
Any other comments? Motion by Ben, seconded by Luis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no. Motion passes. Thanks for joining us, Jim.
Thank you.
All right. Let's keep on rolling to item number eight, Holy Cross Energy purchase of CEC. Jay?
Real quick, Jay or Dan, did you guys let Heather know that we were done?
Yeah, she's back.
Yeah, I'm here. Okay. Sorry, my camera doesn't work. If I turn it on, I get booted. It's been like that all day.
Okay. So the, the town has made four different purchases in the Clean Energy Collective through 2015 and 16. And Clean Energy Collective, the kind of community solar gardens were seen as the cutting edge way to. The. Kind of invest in offsite solar. That model's changed over time. The Clean Energy Collective model is not viable anymore and they're closing down or shutting down many of their LLCs. And I don't know if I'd say going out of business, but the model's changed dramatically. Holy Cross Energy has come forward to buy out those solar gardens. They've provided us three different options for the panels that we own. And if you look at the proposal, really the only option which makes sense is the first one. And that's where they buy back the panels from us. They have a valuation on it. We've gone back and forth and had some lengthy discussions on what their basis for the valuation. We're fairly comfortable with it. It's not perfect. And then we would enroll in their pure program with no additional charges for our water and waste. Water use, which are within the Holy Cross Energy area. Right now, we actually already purchase pure energy from Holy Cross for everything except what's coming out of these solar gardens. The fourth array on this, the one from 2016, that has not been purchased by Holy Cross yet. That'll happen next year and we'll see a similar proposal for that fourth, fourth ownership position. So within your packets. You know, a breakdown of what we own and, and that was always fun to go back, what we own within the, the system. I mean, within the four solar gardens, production levels, and then what we purchased them for and what we'd be getting paid for the, for the three. So we've enjoyed the production off these for the last five years. We actually don't own the energy credits for them, the way the financing was put together. And they're offering or saying, hey, buy, we'll buy it back for you for $255,000 and, and, and change. The, the other options to pay for them to maintain them or take our panels back just aren't viable if you look at the, the models. And really what happened when Holy Cross took on, what took on this program. There was actually a, a contract between Holy Cross, Clean Energy Collective, which once Clean Energy Collective ceased owning the panels, that program went away. And that was the basis for most of the financial benefit for having this in, in place. So staff recommendation is to take the money and run and be ready for a fourth proposal or the fourth buyout next spring. These funds would go to water and sewer. That's where the majority of the money came to purchase it. We did use a little bit of enhancement funds from Holy Cross, which is our 1% fund from Holy Cross. They're not requesting us reimburse those enhance. It would be too tough to break out what percentage came from where and to reimburse the enhancement funds. So at this point, we look at assigning the funds directly back to water and wastewater funds.
Questions of Jay? Ben?
I mean, we just talked about spending $125,000 coming out of reserves and now we're putting 255 back in. But it's because this is going into water and sewer and that's why it's not affecting our reserves. Okay. Otherwise we'd come out, I mean, really we're coming out net positive on this. It's just in different funds, so.
It is pretty ironic. These two proposals, one right after each other. Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I've got it. I would move to accept option one from HCE and sell the town owned panels in Gekasa and Sunnyside Rays to HCE. And enroll the balance of the town's HCE electrical needs for its water and sewer systems in the pure program.
I'll second that and I'll clarify for our interpreter that HCE is Holy Cross Energy.
Oh, sorry, Jim.
I'm just, I was trying to figure it out as I was reading it too.
Okay. Motion by Ben, seconded by Lonnie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no. Motion passes.
And there was actually a motion by Lonnie, seconded by Ben. I just talked a lot.
Thank you.
Doesn't matter.
Good catch, Ben. Kathy, did you get that? I'll assume yes. Okay, we are five minutes ahead of schedule. What's that?
Yes, I got it. I'm sorry. I was muted.
Okay. We are five minutes ahead of schedule, so let's take a five minute break and come back at 7:45.
Hey, Dan. I'm having some internet problems, so the, the screen is freezing on me sometimes. So that's why I'm keeping my picture off as much as possible.
I figured so. Thanks for telling me, Marty. Ben, have things gone reasonably well slipping back into distance learning? At Roaring Fork?
Oh, I don't actually know.
Okay.
Um, I'm, my job right now is running the K8 online program for students who choose not to come back long term.
Okay.
Though I'm actually staying out of the logistics of quarantines and all that. It's been, uh, been challenging for everybody.
Yeah. Thanks for doing what you do.
Yeah. It's after all those months of people saying, why don't we just go back? Now we're going back and it's just the timing is tough and. The studies continue to show that schools don't tend to be where it's spread internationally. You know, they're locking down in European countries now, everything except the schools. Because if the protocols are strictly adhered to in the schools, then you can actually run a school safely. But you have enough exposure in the community that you keep having to isolate groups and isolate teachers. And then at some point, that's what happened at Roaring Fork. They didn't have enough staff to run the school, so.
Yeah.
It's all tough.
Yep. Well, as soon as I. I guess we got to make sure, Marty, will you just let me know verbally when you're back? I guess we gotta make sure, Marty, will you just let me know verbally when you're back? And Heather, you too?
I am here.
Okay.
Present and accounted for.
Erica, are you back? Looks like Marty's back.
I'm back.
Okay, well, we have a quorum, and uh Jay, are you? Jay's back, okay. Uh, right, um, let me Okay, Jay, looks like this one's you. Uh, we're moving on to item number nine, consideration of ordinance number fifteen, series of twenty twenty. Requests from Kroger and Carbondale Marketplace to define school property in the Carbondale Municipal Code Liquor Section. Uh, and the agenda gets cut off, so I'm not sure. Um, and just, I know there's people who'd like to speak on this issue. Uh, Jay's gonna present the issue, we're gonna open it up to staff for questions. Uh, then we'll open it up to the public for questions, and if you would, raise your Zoom hand, so I know who wants to speak, and then we'll bring it back. So Jay, take it away.
Yeah, the town has received various inquiries from both future tenants um and Kroger about eligibility for um liquor licenses in the Carbondale Marketplace. It became obvious after looking at distance requirements and then working with Mark Hamilton, the town attorney, on how school properties define that the proximity of the Carbondale Marketplace to property owned by C R M S in its totality, the whole um C R M S property would prohibit um any class of liquor licenses from being um permitted on that site. So the owner or the representatives from the marketplace um and from Kroger asked us to look in to this issue and see how it, which ways it could be addressed. At this point, there's no pending liquor licenses um being, that's been submitted. Um, nothing in front of you tonight, other than the legislative action of how to define school property for school purposes. Um, you know, the intent or it's obviously intent of the legislation um for separations from liquor stores from schools is to protect kids um from having liquor right next to them or being able to easily acquire it. Um, the distance from here, the property actively used for educational purposes on a regular basis from C R M S is quite a ways. Um, the property adjacent to this is currently leased for agricultural uses. Um, C R M S occasionally has, may have an educational program associated with that, and there's a letter from C R M S in your packet. So right now, we have uh retail spaces which are leased and ready to be used, um which can't, under our current definition, um be used for qualified for liquor licenses. Nothing in this changes separation requirements from other stores. This is solely or other liquor license holders. This is solely a um clarification of how we define for school purposes. Um, we don't change that distance from the kids. It's what part of the property is utilized for school purposes. And Mark, would you like to expand on that a little bit? I know you've been involved in some of the discussions on this, on this topic.
Uh, I I think that that and your memo and the emails in the packet fairly well cover it. Basically, the the town has legislative discretion if it would like to deviate from the default state requirements. You can make five hundred feet, three hundred feet, you can change, uh, you could create a subcategory of schools that aren't protected by this if you want it. Um, or in this case, we've kind of done a hybrid where we've defined a, that the active use portion of the property that's actually used regularly for educational purposes is what matters, not uh in the ca- this case, uh, a lot of uh vacant agricultural type land in between. Um, so I think the board has discretion there, and the board also would have discretion about what types of liquor licenses would benefit from this, be it one or all or some combination. So the way this is written, all types of liquor licenses would be affected by this change. So it could theoretically apply to a liquor store or a restaurant or a fermented beverage license in the case of a grocery store. So um, we worked with Jay on this, and we came up with what we came up with. But the board has full legislative discretion on this, and we can do it this way. Or we can do it whichever other way you prefer, or you can decide you don't want to do it at all, but it's all, it's entirely up to the board.
Thank you, Mark, thank you, Jay. So pretty similar to the issue we addressed a month or two ago uh with respect to the sale of marijuana. Uh, any questions of Mark or Jay on this? Ben?
Uh, just what other restrictions are in place um as far as Jay mentioned distancing between liquor stores? And then uh one of the emails um from a citizen and local business owner mentioned, I think, something about a different process that a grocery store would have to go through. Can you just kind of lay out what are those other restrictions? Like, if we remove this restriction, would any of those uses, all of those uses potentially be allowed on this property? Liquor stores and grocery store beer sales, um specifically.
Again, uh, as I said, I think that this, the way this is drafted, it's uh my view that this would open the door to potential licensing of all liquors, liquor license types. Um, not just fermented beverages in the case of beer at a grocery store, or not just a liquor store and not just a restaurant. It would be all of the above, but it doesn't preordain that. Each of those uh potential licensees are gonna need to go through an application and abide by all the other requirements that pertain to issuing those licenses. This is just one uh of the restrictions. It opens a door to a potential approval, but it doesn't, we can't decide if there's going to be an approval or not until you have an actual application, we apply all these other standards, have the hearing and decide if it goes forward.
Yeah, I was just wanting a little bit clear uh idea of what some of those other restrictions would be. Like, are there other restrictions that would prohibit a liquor store from going here because of proximity to other liquor stores? That's unrelated to the proximity of school? And are there other restrictions that would prohibit the grocery store from getting a a beer license for some reason? Those are, not to go too deep into the liquor laws right now, but my understanding is this is just one of many restrictions. And so if we remove this, it doesn't open the door on that property to all those, it just re- removes this one restriction. But just like a little bit better understanding of what else could restrict.
I, I haven't done, Ben, an inventory of all the things that would potentially apply. I don't know if Kathy or Jay can do that top of their head, but you know, they're gonna be uh distancing spacing requirements from other liquor stores. Uh, and there are going to be other uh code considerations. Jay, do you have a list in your mind of the things that we need to advise Ben of here?
There is some separation requirements um and from liquor stores that to um fermented malt beverage um offerings that we would need to determine if they submitted the, I I can't tell you, Ben, whether it's three thousand or fifteen hundred. There are some timings based on building permits, and I think we have representatives from Kroger's um legal team here and from some of the property owners who could probably represent what those, what those barriers would be when we get to a hearing, hearing process on that. But you know, Mark's correct that, you know, there are other requirements. Um, the biggest barrier at this point is the, the black and white one is to the school properties, particularly on the the restaurant side of things, the barn tavern restaurant side of things.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Marty?
Yeah, so um having seen the email from C R M S from their attorneys. So they're saying they don't see any use for it, any educational use at this time, but that could change as time goes on. They would have the right to develop that property since it's their property. Is that correct, Mark?
Yes, it is, but if a license issues um based on a determination of what's active now, then then that license uh it's gonna, you know, unless it lapses and there's a new application, then the the school spacing would not be reapplied um again.
So, Mark, along those lines, um if, let let's say the school decides to build a, an athletic field right on the other side of the fence at some point. Number one, they wouldn't be prevented from doing so, correct? And number two, then the board at that time could always choose to not renew a liquor license because conditions have changed, correct?
I I don't think that is correct on that piece, once the liquor license is in place. If a school, you know, imagine that uh, you know, any school gets built, you know, the playing field is a good example, but imagine another school gets built in Glenwood next to a a store. I don't think that puts the licensee in a place of of non-renewal. Jay, do you have experience in that one?
Yeah, I, we had a pretty lengthy discussion on that on some preschool issues a while back, and um I I think there's a comfort factor that if a school expanded on that property, um it wouldn't, it wouldn't create a problem for the license in place. If someone came in with a new license request, um then it's a a new start, and then it would issue it. It would create or could create issues. Um, numerous communities have dropped school or have altered school spacing requirements. Licenses, and in some cases, there are schools which have applied for liquor licenses on their campuses based on some of their entertainment venues, venues they own, I've been involved in a couple of those. So um what we're talking about here is um, we're not looking at changing the distance requirements, but some towns have taken that approach, even Glenwood. Um, in fact, one of the app, one of the potential leaseholders of property went and talked with some of the uh establishments closer to the Glenwood High School and um found out that the town had changed the spacing requirements a while back.
Okay, yeah. Good clarification, thank you. I remember that discussion. Uh, any other questions of Jay or Mark? Luis?
Yes, um, Mark or Jay, maybe if we were to change, approve the category, and then we had, let's say, a restaurant applied for a liquor license, if we were to grant that restaurant a liquor license, do we open ourselves up to any liability for not then approving another type of license? Like, let's say, uh, fault, uh, sorry, uh, fermented or malt beverage license?
Uh, e- each application, you know, these are like land use. E- each, each applicant has property rights, the opponents have property rights, and we do them on a case-by-case basis, Luis. So, you know, if we were to say, uh, you know, use the spacing and and treat one to say it's fine for the fermented beverage, fermented malt beverage and not okay for a restaurant, even though this legislation is blind to those two different types of applications, I I don't think that would be a valid basis for the town to deny. Um, but if those applications fall at different time periods and one of them meets a standard and one of them doesn't based on the facts of the application, then there may be grounds for the town to reach a different conclusion on those two. Um, but they prob- the grounds probably don't relate to the school spacing issue unless the board decides that you want to uh limit the types of licenses that would benefit from this relaxed distancing standard. Thanks.
Marty?
Yeah, just a little clarification, Mark, so you're saying it would be conceivable to say um to grant the waiver, the distance waiver for, say, a restaurant use? And, but only for that type of use, is that correct?
A- again, we're not, tonight's legislative, we don't have an applicant, and we're not dealing with a specific proposal. But it would be uh within the realm of the board's legislative authority to say for instance, uh restaurants are okay, liquor stores are not, vice versa. Same with beer, a grocery store, you can pick among those categories. The way this is written, it is blind to that, it applies to all of those.
Thank you.
Okay, good clarifications here. Any, anybody else have any questions before we open it up to the public? All right, I'm seeing a whole host of folks that may want to speak. If you would like to speak, please raise your Zoom hand. Uh, Briston, looks like you're first up, and then we'll go to Kerry.
Yeah, hey, Dan, um, and Jay, can you hear me?
I can, just remember, uh, please address me uh three minutes and um, uh, please be respectful.
Yes, uh, this is Briston Peterson, uh, lives at four seventeen Rivers Bend in Carbondale, Colorado. Um, we are the property owner of Lot Four and the developer of Crystal River Marketplace. And uh, we have advanced this request on the behalf of uh two tenants. Uh, one, Michael with Ming's, who I believe is is gonna speak, and two, Kevin with New York Pizza. And um, I hope the trustees uh have the diagram in their packet that they can look at the distance uh from the existing structures of C R M S uh to Lot Four um as well as to the fence line uh and and the uh, the the walking path distance uh to uh the proposed tenants. Um, I want to bring to the town's attention, I don't know if those of you remember, uh, Cloudow's Irish Pub uh that was located in uh the George Lyons Commercial Project just to the south. Uh, there was actually a liquor license granted in that establishment. That was approximately a hundred and fifty feet away from the southern boundary of C R M S, just across from Main Street. So um, I'm speaking on behalf of our tenants. Uh, you know, one is a uh, is a pizza shop that customers want to go in there and, you know, grab a pizza, slice of beer, or excuse me, a slice of pizza, drink a beer, have a glass of wine. And uh, uh, with regard to Ming's, the same thing, there's gonna be a sushi bar there, be able to have some sake and and uh enjoy some um uh, a nice experience uh for the customers um and for our leaseholds. So any questions on behalf of the property owner, I'm here to ask or answer uh anything uh that the trustees may have.
Thank you, Briston, thanks for being here. Uh, all right, next up, we have Kerry, or excuse me, yeah, Kerry, and then we'll go to Terry Kirk.
Kerry, Kerry Shanks?
Yeah, Kerry, you're first, and then Terry with a T.
Hey. Kerry Shanks, ninety-nine Garfield, owner of Marble Distilling Company in the distillery. And thanks for having me, appreciate the opportunity to speak. Um, you know, I come to this late, but in that, I I'm wondering if this is kind of quickly put out there and hastily formulated, and and here's for the following reasons. I do see that there's a precedent, I I was involved in some discussions early on with my building. So I've thought about this from those perspectives. Uh, this is not geographic in nature, it is town-wide. So I think if you think about it that way, it seems like uh maybe there's some time that people could take to do some real thoughtful review and maybe even analysis of what the 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 uh impacts would be to other schools within the town. Uh, it seems like a timeout for review of that would be important, because it seems like, because this is not geographic in nature, uh, we might want to think about it from that perspective. Number two, and forgive the cerebral angst here, um, but is reading the packet and reading the applicant, not the applicant, but Briston's words, he used the word variance in his first request. And when you look at the legal letter of the law of variance, it's supposed to be predicated on um hardship, not by somebody's making. And really, because this isn't a a request for variance now, it just got me to ruminate it on it more. And I wonder, was this always the plan? Because having been in mul- involved in really a lot of P U Ds, not within just this community, but in the valley, in the valley and outside. Um, it seems like if somebody's giving us a historic note of an Irish pub that had the ability to do it, that people would have known when they came with a P U D of this magnitude to make sure that uh their rights are protected in the kind of development they put together. So it just makes me wonder if this wasn't premeditated, and I just feel like that's disingenuous for a guy that's following all the rules all the time. So uh, what I would ask is you all to really put forward a thoughtful discussion, just for a thoughtful discussion, just for your consideration, a thoughtful discussion about separating out that idea of off-premise from on-premise. I don't think we can ask any restaurateur to come into town and not have a liquor license. But if you look deeper, there are other rules involved here with off-premise getting new licenses for statewide uh, franchise chains. And I think that's a big impact to this town, not the least of which is because we're not a franchise chain kind of town. So uh, I really appreciate the thoughtfulness that you all are putting to this and I hope you'll consider and have a robust discussion tonight about the separation of on and off-premise, if you know what that means, right? Restaurants and bars are one thing, retail stores are completely another, uh, along with those larger statewide regulations that are involved on that retail side. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kerry and Terry. And then we'll go to Julie. And then Adam. Oh, it looks like Terry. Oh, Julie, it looks like you, you've been brought up. So Julie, if you would state your name, where you're from and give us three minutes.
Yep, I'm Julie Tran and I'm the owner of Main Street Wines and Spirits. And again, I would like to echo what Kerry had just said. I think that there would have been a lot of thought put into the building and the location of this property. And knowing that future, um, you know, the intent would have been to have restaurants, city market with a beer license request, things like that. So again, I, I, you know, echo what Kerry has to say in that, um, I hope that you'll take into consideration. You know, thinking about the difference between on-premise and off-premise. Off-premise, I certainly understand restaurants wanting to serve beer and wine along with food. That is, you know, that's, that, that's common. However, with city market coming in and um, you know, I, I've walked in there, I've seen the size of the refrigerators. I, I'm concerned about the impact that will have on small businesses like Main Street Wines and Spirits. You know, we're a small business, we're local. Um, we don't have the huge facility that a city market has. And so that's what my biggest concern is, is what impact will this have on the small businesses that have been on Main Street or in Carbondale that support the local community? So I ask that you take that into consideration.
Thank you, Julie. Looks like Terry has signed off. So Adam and then Jocelyn.
Can you folks hear me?
We can.
Great. Good evening. My name is Adam Stapen. Yeah, I'm an attorney licensed of practice law here in Colorado. I represent Dillon Companies. And uh, obviously we are in support of this change of the ordinance and I'd like to address a couple of points. First of all, as you've been told, just because you approve this change doesn't mean that you'll approve a liquor license. I know the concern of the Main Street Liquor, who just spoke to you about small business and we really need that. That's essentially done under the secondary hearing. If you do approve this ordinance change, then we do come back to you for a liquor license application where then you hear from the town of test the needs and desires and what, 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 what your constituents are looking for. Um, I can also address the point of retail liquor stores and distances. This does not change the distance restrictions between retail liquor stores or liquor licensed drugstores and retail liquor stores, which my understanding this location would not be permitted for a retail liquor store because it is within three thousand feet. The law does provide that a fermented malt beverage packaged store, if you would, a city market uh, cannot be within five hundred feet of a retail liquor store. So there is the distinction built in by the legislature. But to your points, this does not change the restrictions I would apply to retail liquor stores versus retail liquor stores. As you might imagine, as you probably know, city market is, you know, statewide along with King Supers and it's the business model and practice and pattern to provide products that the consumers want. And all we're looking to doing is having an opportunity to apply for that fermented malt beverage product and allow you to consider the needs and desires at a secondary hearing. And I think to your point of, or some of the discussion here earlier about that's differentiate between off-premise and on-premise, as it currently stands right now, on-premise can sell cocktails to go. Uh, and they can sell alcohol to go. And there's a legis, I believe there's a, um, bill coming down the legislature that's looking to making that permanent. So um, you know, I, I think the distinction between on-premise versus off-premise, while I understand some of the concerns that I've heard so far, I think those should be addressed in a secondary hearing relative to the liquor license itself, should an application be before you, not whether or not the distance uh, to school as defined by this ordinance that, that we're proposing be adopted. We're here to answer any questions you may have. I do have representatives with me. Justin Floor, he's adult beverage manager. And also Jessica Traubridge and she's with Corporate Affairs. For Dillon Companies, we're here to answer any questions you folks have and I do appreciate your time.
Thank you, Adam. Okay, uh, Jocelyn and then Francie. Jocelyn, if you would, you just need to unmute and give us your name, where you're from and uh, you have three minutes.
Got it. My name is Jocelyn Wood. I'm an attorney at Wood Pierce Nelson, um, two oh one Main Street in Carbondale. I live at two four one Larkspur Drive in Carbondale. I represent Sopris Liquor and Wine. And I also have many, many Carbondale resident clients. I've reviewed the packet submitted to the town and I have a couple of things that, you know, I'd like to note. After reviewing the letter from Joe White of CRMS, um, it does seem to me that the school actively uses the school grounds adjacent to the new, the new city market property for what is called its ranch program. Irrespective of the fact that the lands also used for grazing and crop cultivation. I am of the opinion that ordinance fifteen, as it's presently written, might not allow the sale of alcoholic beverages at the Crystal River Marketplace. Because there's no clear definition of um, active use and the letter from Mr. White, you know, clearly states that they do use the land for its, you know, its uh, ranch programs. I agree with Town Attorney Mark, um, that the town has broad authority and discretion and they can modify the distance requirements to allow for the sale of alcohol in marketplace. I would encourage the town trustees to carefully consider these implications and possible outcomes by making hasty decisions tonight in this regard. Once a license is issued, whether it's a fermented malt beverage license or um, for off-premises consumption or a restaurant license, um, it will be grandfathered. And any future change to the CRMS grounds that, you know, are ongoing, whether they're the ranch program or agricultural, it would be irrelevant. The, the use, the license would be um, grandfathered. A new dormitory could be placed right next to the marketplace and um, you wouldn't be able to take back that license. The town and its residents and the teachers and parents of boarding students at CRMS should consider uh, the sale of alcohol by a grocery store for off-premises consumption as a very different animal than the sale of beer and wine at a sit-down restaurant. You don't see a whole lot of young teenagers going into a restaurant, pulling out a menu and ordering a glass of wine or a beer. The, the, you know, the oversight in restaurants is, is far greater than it is, you know, at a large grocery store where kids wander in and out all the time. Finally, um, I'd like to mention that the um, statute and the regulations that um, Adam recently mentioned forty-four dash three dash three oh one, which provide distance requirements um, between the various licensees, that those um, while they are you know, they're, they're, I think they're subject to interpretation and we are still researching whether or not the FMB fermented um, beverage license, whether that would preclude, you know, whether those distance requirements are five hundred feet or three thousand feet. And I think that's unclear.
Please wrap it up, Jocelyn.
I suggest, um, and, and we would promote that the on-premises establishments, you know, maybe be allowed to move forward and that the package off-premises license that you exclude that from any ordinance that you might um, have going forward.
Thank you, Jocelyn.
You're welcome.
Okay, Francie and then uh, Michael Zhang.
Hi guys, I'm assuming you can hear me. I sent you a letter today. I'm just going to read through the main points of it. I completely agree with Jocelyn on the point she made. I am the manager at Fat Belly Burgers, but I'm not representing Fat Belly right now. Sure Thing is not a competitor for us. If they serve alcohol, that's a completely different kind of restaurant than Fat Belly. So I'm speaking more as a Carbondale resident for the last almost thirty years. And um, I should also say that I am the um, picking county commissioner-elect, just to, for, so you know. So um, the town of Carbondale has very clear ordinances, not permitting the sale of alcohol from any premise that is located less than five hundred feet from any educational institution property. And we all know that CRMS property falls within that five hundred foot distance from the Crystal River Marketplace, yet Briston Peterson has requested a variance to allow two restaurants to be granted liquor licenses, so they will sign a lease for his property at the Crystal River Marketplace. Uh, I think that's pretty clear. That's what his motivation is. And likewise, there is a request for a variance to allow City Market to sell beer. I'm strongly opposed to the town altering its ordinances or granting variances or reclassifying CRMS as an exempt type of institution in order to accommodate yet another developer who wants government to change thoughtful laws in order to be able to do what they want. Our country as a whole and the Roaring Fork Valley, including Aspen in particular, have allowed wealthy people and corporations to dictate how we run elections, pass laws and subvert laws at the expense of the rest of us. We are all aware of building codes which were passed in good faith and for good reason, continually being altered to accommodate wealthy builders, developers and property owners. Our local government obviously thought carefully about ordinance fifteen and passed it with our children in mind. Now Briston Peterson wants us to negate those good and sound intentions so that he can sign leases who want to sell alcohol. CRMS has indicated that the field adjoining the Crystal River Marketplace, while a pasture at the moment and only occasionally used for educational purposes, could be developed by CRMS for other academic uses. And they have made it clear via Joe White's letter that they do not want potential CRMS opportunities to be restricted by any variance that may be passed to accommodate the Crystal River Marketplace. In short, the laws were in place when Peterson bought and began to develop the property. Either he did not complete due diligence or he assumed that he could sway our elected officials to alter the original sound intent of the ordinance to allow him to do as he pleases. This is nothing personal against Briston Peterson. I don't even know him. But I'm asking you to please stand by the original intent of ordinance fifteen and do not change another statute or law to accommodate a developer. Thank you.
Thank you, Francie. Terry, we haven't forgot about you. Um, just seemed like you were coming and going. So Jay, if you could bring Terry in. All right, Terry, you just need to unmute, give us your name, where you're from and three minutes, please.
Terry Kirk, ten eleven Main Street, Carbondale, Colorado. I'm the owner of the Carbondale Plaza, which is containing Sopris Liquor and Wine, Latina, La Perla and Subway. The, there are two things about your, what you're talking about, although staff has lumped them all together into one. And the first thing is giving City Market a liquor license. City Market as it stands from what the law is stating in uh, I, in fact, I sent you guys an email and, and put this all out. They do not, they cannot ask for a liquor license. The section that has been passed in June, let's see, June fourth, I believe, two thousand eighteen details a strong uh, plan of what liquor store licenses can do in grocery stores, how many they're entitled to and when they are entitled to them. City Market is trying to backdoor this situation by abandoning their liquor license and then trying to come into a saying that they're applying a new liquor license to drop their distancing from liquor stores, existing liquor stores from three thousand square, three thousand linear feet to five hundred.
Terry, we're, we're not considering City Markets. Uh, they haven't applied for a liquor license, so this is just about the legislative change.
Yes. Okay, let's go on to Mr. Peterson's uh, group that are asking to, for you to change the law. As Mr. Hamilton states in his message, to this date, no one has been approved to change this distancing in the history of the town of Carbondale. He's got that in his letter. Another letter details that uh, let's, I don't wanted to make this too confusing, but look, Mr. Peterson, I'm sure knew what he was getting into with the amount of time, effort and money that was spent on that shopping center's approval. I would assume that he knew the laws from day one. From what I understand, he does not. And he is trying to get a, a variance here. Uh, that's like one of the other speakers has said, then non, uh, non-knowledge of the law is not a, a defense. If you say that you didn't know it and you didn't have any idea about it, that doesn't count. Everybody in this town has gone through the same process, I myself concluded, included that I had to walk out with the town and measure out to put a, get a liquor license for Trattoria Roma, if you recall. And if I hadn't have made those qualifications, I don't think that anybody would have changed the town law for me to get a liquor store license there or a liquor license for that restaurant. I detailed this in, in an email that I sent all the board and, and uh, thank you for your time. And I appreciate it.
Thank you, Terry. All right, Michael and then Justin.
Michael? Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, my name is Michael Zhang. I'm the owner of Ming's Cafe here in Carbondale, uh, zero nine three four, uh, Highway one thirty-three. Literally just across street from the Carbondale Marketplace right now. So um, I just signed a lease with Briston and uh, Ming's Cafe is moving across street to uh, uh, Carbondale Marketplace. And uh, after I find out that this, uh, we have a little issue with liquor license, I was shocked because I don't really want to be the, you know, one of the few restaurants in Carbondale don't have a liquor license. Think about it. You go to Ming's, order some, you know, gyozza and some sushi and you can order a socket. I cannot believe, I cannot predict how many customer will walk away. And uh, plus I'm just a, um, small restaurant owner and uh, just trying to make a business and just try to make all my customer happy. So um, uh, please reconsider, um, at least for a restaurant, to grant a liquor license. And also, um, I have a restaurant in uh, Glenwood Springs too. In City of Glenwood Springs, um, they have already um, uh, changed the law, changed the state law of this um, school zone. Uh, recently this year, um, the restaurant Spanglish. And that's on the Van Rand Plaza. It's literally across street from the uh, Glenwood Springs High School. They got their liquor license and my previous restaurant Taipei Tokyo, uh, there's a new restaurant moving in. Now it's going to be a steakhouse. They also got their liquor license from the City of Glenwood Springs. So since we're all Garfield County and uh, it's uh, just for restaurant um, um, purposes and we all want our customer coming and have a good time, enjoy. So please reconsider at least uh, for um, the restaurant part for the liquor license.
Thank you, Michael. Justin and then someone without a name. And Justin, if you uh, give us your name, where you're from and you have three minutes.
Sure, name is Justin Floor. Um, I actually live down in Loveland, Colorado.
Sure, name is Justin Floor. I actually live down in Loveland, Colorado, but I am the manager for King Supers, working down in Denver. I was up there for the grand opening in Carbondale, and I can't tell you how many customers really were surprised at the fact that we didn't carry anymore. After I came back down and worked in the main office, we constantly got calls for about the first four weeks. So I just wanted to kind of address, you know, the need and the convenience of the community. And I also wanted to let you guys know that there are several systems in place because I do know that there is a concern about schools being so close to it. But on the front range, we have an average of five thousand transactions that go through our registers every single week. A good percentage of those are beer. But in the last two years, King Supers has only had one violation division-wide of selling to a minor. So the systems that we do have in place, in addition to the training for each of our associates, are very thorough, very successful. I just wanted to address those two things and just kind of let you guys know that even last week, I did receive one call. They have, but I did receive one call about the concern for that store not having beer when we had it there prior. But thank you guys so much for listening to us tonight, and thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Justin. Okay, looks like we have somebody queued up. I don't know what your name is. If you would give us your name, where you're from, in three minutes.
So this is the known name, Secret Piper, owner of Wine Time, seven eighty-six to seven ninety-eight, Highway one thirty-three. So we are the closest to the Plaza, the closest retail liquor store to the Plaza. And I don't want to repeat, a lot of the statements have been mentioned already. But going back to the point with the restaurants, we would also support a restaurant's getting a liquor license for the simple fact that those establishments are more contained and have shown in the past how to operate with a liquor license with good considerations. Various, you know, in City Market, they're very much understaffed right now. They cannot even keep their shelves stocked and to put the burden of, you know, checking minors, I cannot see that happening like it is in a retail store in a small restaurant. So that's the concern that was always there and will continue to be. With the argument about the convenience for the community. I mean, this community has existed many decades with liquor stores only without City Market having a fermented beer license. So I'm not sure why this is made such a big point. Of course, it had an impact on all us liquor store owners. And our sale, beer sales plummeted, and it has a significant impact on the add-on sales because people who come to our retail stores, they don't only buy beer, they also buy other stuff, including food. And so that is all lost. And we have already five retail liquor stores in Carbondale. Plus, we have Catherine's store nearby. A lot of people go visit Costco. I'm just asking to also give a fair consideration to the businesses who have supported this community for many years. We've been here twelve years. I know Sopers Liquor and Main Street Liquor have been here a long time, too. And just to give that consideration, too, that we're working really hard to keep it within the law and protecting the minors and also keeping just a good competitive range here and not making it difficult for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Secret. Okay, I see two, nope, more hands being raised. Mike H. and then Molly.
Yeah, hi, can you guys hear me okay?
We can.
Great. You know, I, in talking as far as just trying to
Mike, please give us your name, where you're from.
Mike Hastefield. I live in the valley up in Aspen. We have businesses down in Carbondale. I'm calling, you know, I called in because I was concerned about this type of, you know, asking for this variance because I do feel that it is something as far as when you're doing your due diligence and you're building this property as far as that you would have probably had figured that out because I know they had a very lengthy time getting it approved. I am okay with an idea of a variance, you know, lower variance for on-premise, you know, restaurants, things like that, because I do feel that those can be a benefit to the community. They're usually small businesses, especially in our town, that tend to, you know, give back to the community. You know, I don't agree with what Kroger, they say as far as that, you know, this is, you know, we're not, they're not applying for a liquor license, but I do feel like this is the first step in an approval process because it is one of the things that they get checked off on. This can be kind of just put to bed right now as far as with the, you know, idea with, hopefully the trustees will not allow it. And also, I do think there's a big difference when, you know, one of the attorneys brought up as far as that, you know, restaurants can do, you know, to-go drinks, things like that, and if they want to pass that, there's a big difference between somebody grabbing a to-go drink and having over a thousand something, probably different SKUs of beer or a thousand square feet in alcohol that they could probably be able to sell there. My father-in-law has Pops Liquors. It would literally put him out. I mean, we're talking probably fifty percent of their business's beer sales. You know, we can't, you know, you can't compete with a publicly traded company that doesn't need to make this, you know, you know, that basically has thousands of stores in which to kind of, you know, make their bottom line. So I just hope that you guys can just consider not having this as far as, as not allowing this variance. Because again, I just think as far as in our local, small-town community, there's just a lot of thought was put into this rule, and I do think as far as that it'd be a shame to see it go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Looks like our last two speakers are Molly Jones and then Kiko Peña. Molly, if you would, unmute, state your name, tell us where you're from.
And I'm not Molly Jones. I'm Kevin Jones. That's, I'm on my wife's computer.
Okay.
Owner of New York Pizza, and we have a store in Aspen, a store in Elgabel, and we'd like to put one in Carbondale. I've carried a liquor license for twenty-seven years, for almost eleven years at two different locations, and luckily, we haven't had any problems. I have two children, seven and eleven, that are in school here in the valley, and my thoughts have always been about the kids, and I understand when I was going into this little adventure, I am a small business owner, I never really thought about CRMS having the land right there. It never really occurred to me as, you know, driving through Carbondale, you know, thousands of times to go to the co-op or do any other business I had to do there. I never really realized that that was a situation that I was possibly getting into down here. We will hopefully talk to you again in a few weeks or soon about getting a liquor license. And my understanding is that each liquor license is considered individually. I obviously have applied for two in two different towns, and now I'd like to apply for one in Carbondale. And whether or not the City Market should be able to sell liquor, and I should be, or I should be able to sell beer and wine next door to it, is it's a tricky question, and I see why people are coming at it from both sides. It's something difficult to consider for you guys, but I would like to think that I would be careful in my selling of beer and wine and pizza, hopefully, soon in Carbondale. I don't really have a whole lot to add. It's been very interesting listening to everybody's opinions and views and what's going on in Carbondale. It's a vibrant community, and it's a place I'd like to join. And I would like you guys to consider at least allowing liquor licenses at maybe restaurants, on-premise restaurants and stuff. And that's all I got to say. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Kevin. Okay, Kiko.
Hi, guys. I'm Kiko Peña, owner of Sopers Liquor Wine at ten twenty-six Highway one thirty-three in Carbondale. I am also currently serving on the board of the Chamber of Commerce there in Carbondale. In the matter of ordinance fifteen, I am strongly opposed. Colorado state laws are put into place by elected officials. Those laws are made to protect its citizens. In this case, it's protecting Carbondale's youth from an easier way to obtain alcohol. CRMS is a boarding school with high school-aged youth living in dorms without parental supervision. Please, please take into consideration that Kroger and its representatives were part of a working group that conveyed for over a year following the passage of Senate Bill sixteen ninety-seven that helped, they helped in to form and write the current laws, including this five-hundred-foot provision. Now they want to change the rules in the middle of the game? That's not right. And frankly, it's an insult. During the same working group, City Market was successful in changing the law that lowered the minimum age requirement for selling beer to eighteen in the state of Colorado. It is very conceivable that an eighteen-year-old cashier can sell beer at a city market to an underage youth. Maybe they've got a friend. At City Market, kids walk around freely and not as closely monitored as when they walked into my store. It would be much easier for them to obtain beer at City Market than it would at a liquor store or a sit-down restaurant. At liquor stores, red flags go up right away when they walk in. They stand out for their age and are more carefully monitored. In addition, ordinance fifteen is disputing and has based this whole thing on the interpretation of property used for school purposes area of the law. In a letter written by Director of Finance for CRMS, Joe White, he clearly states, "Please note that the entirety of CRMS land is used from time to time for educational programming, including the CRMS Ranch Program, in which students, among other activities, build and repair fencing, maintain irrigation ditches, feed livestock, and learn about the importance of agriculture and water resources in our region." "CRMS Ranch program activities do occur," that's what he said, "they do occur on the portion of CRMS land you have inquired about." This seems cut and dry to me. He just said they use the land for the ranch program. That falls under property used for school purposes. Wrong page. "I ask you to consider what this ordinance would mean for all the schools in Carbondale, not just CRMS. This is a law that once changed cannot be taken back. It's a citywide, all-encompassing, and forever law. We and future generations will have to live with and its consequences forever. Business owners in Carbondale have all lived with this law and adjusted our business decisions accordingly for years. Why are we even entertaining changing this law now? As the owner of Sopers Liquor, along with other local business owners, we have made financial business decisions based on this law and the fact that City Market would not be able to sell beer. Now I'm asking you to uphold that same law and to help and to not help create loopholes for corporate America to jump through." We, all we hear from the town is stick together, support small business. We all have, we all have those Chamber of Commerce shop local stickers on our doors and windows. You, our elected leaders, must lead by example, and it's time to walk the walk. Don't turn your back on us now just because corporate America is staring you down. Vote no and stick up for us, the small business owner, the town of Carbondale, and its citizens. Thank you, guys.
Oh, Kiko, why'd you go there? But I appreciate your comments. I appreciate everybody's comments. It's clearly that, it's clear that folks feel really strongly about this particular issue. And by the way, for the board, I'm not seeing any other hands, so we'll close that. It's clear there's a lot of angles from which we can come at this. I do want to make some, make a few responses and kind of frame where we go from here. I want the members of the public to know that this is not hasty. We actually considered this and a similar consideration for a small business in Carbondale so that they would be able to be located, not in this specific shopping center, but next door. So we've, we have already given this a fair amount of thought. Having said that, we don't have to make a decision tonight. There are a lot of issues. I don't think there's anything that's so urgent that would forces to make this decision tonight. I think, well, I'll just, I'll just leave it at that for now. Yeah. So what we have on the table right now is legislative action that would allow applicants to apply for a liquor license. As Mark laid out, right now, as the ordinance is written, it would allow for any type of ordinance, and because it's legislative, we could choose to limit that if we want. So I'll entertain thoughts and comments from trustees. Marty?
Yeah. I don't see this as being so cut and dried. I think it's a lot more complicated than it appeared on the surface. And while I fully understand a small business entrepreneur, whether whatever type of restaurant wanting to have a license to serve beer or wine or whatever cocktail with their food. The thing with City Market is a different question. And this is just about the distancing with the school. And that raises the question in me, the school owns the property. They say they use it now for their agricultural program, but they reserve the right to use it for future development. Well, if we pass this, we're saying the liquor, the liquor, whether it's restaurant or City Market, will be there, and that five hundred feet that was the designation is at the window. We've made exceptions on several things in the past. And I think I could not support this the way it stands now. But I would think it's a complicated enough issue that maybe we should table it and think about it and reconsider it at a
Okay. Marty, we're losing you. Marty, we lost you. You can come back. Luis, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, just some comments. I really appreciate everyone dialing in and for this item, which obviously raises, gives us a lot to think about and raises a lot of concerns. Kind of a follow-up to Marty's point about, you know, we've made a lot of big exceptions in the past when it comes to certain things, but I think this, to me, that's more of a precedent for what could be just opening, you know, a Pandora's box into how things are handled in the future as it relates to liquor licenses and distances, and knowing CRMS well. You know, the fact is that they are growing, and they can and probably will continue to develop into areas that are going to be closer. And so I echo Marty's sentiments that it's not something that I can support. And I think there's a lot to consider and a lot to think about, so at the very least, it makes sense to me that we would table this.
I'm sorry, Luis, you said, is it your preference to table it? Or is that what you said at the end?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay. Other thoughts. Bonnie?
Yeah, I'm, I need to table it, too. I mean, this is just way too complicated to even consider this evening. You know, on the one hand, if you think about the former City Market location, they were given the okay to have beer when the state law was changed, right? But then on the other hand, with this new development, certainly there were regulations in place that need to be upheld. You know, and I, I can understand where the restaurants would would appreciate being able to serve alcoholic beverages if they were inclined to move into the new location before it was built. But then it would, would have been up to the developer team to advise them, I would think, that there was a consideration there, and it sounds like everybody's surprised, so. You know, again, I'm with Luis and Marty. There's a lot to think about here to dissect what actually is or could be an appropriate move for us, but I'm not ready to make one tonight by any means.
Okay. Heather, I'll wait till you unmute yourself. That's how I'll know you want to speak, but Okay, there we go. okay, there we go, Heather.
Nah, Erica, Erica can go first. She was before me anyway.
Um, I mean, I'm okay with continuing the, you know, or having the discussion later, I guess, tabling it for a later discussion. Um, but, I mean, I feel like I really appreciate everybody's input, um, but I feel like you should call it what it is. You don't want City Market to sell beer. And, you know, bringing in these inflammatory statements, um, I mean, Glenwood Springs reduced the limit and it is not doomsday, kids just drinking everywhere. You know, we have built a society where there are restrictions in place on those places, City Market. You know, they'll have those restrictions in place. Um, you know, we've reviewed them thoroughly. We do even do checks on tobacco products. And so I just think we should take a step back and it's, you know, this, we all knew this development was coming. We knew there's going to be restaurants, potentially a liquor store. And we reduce the access for a pot shop to be in one of the developments there for the same, you know, uh, footage requirements away from a property line. And yes, I know Joe White's, you know, says that they may use it in the future for that property, but I live right here. I look at that field every single day. There is never a single student in that field. So I just want us to, yes, we need to be unified and we can work and figure this out together, but let's not, you know, make outlandish statements, um, and just call it what it is. And if we're worried about City Market selling beer, then you guys, let's say that. Um, so that's where I am. I'm kind of surprised by, uh, the, um, doomsday language that all of a sudden our youth are going to be walking around with bottles of booze, um, that a lot of our entities are assuming is going to happen. Um, but it sounds like a lot of the board wants to, you know, make a decision at a later time and, um, I think it'd be good to figure out what kind of research we want, uh, to help us decide um, and what information would help you guys, you know, move forward with that.
Thank you, Erica. Heather?
Thanks. Um, yeah, so I'm, there's a couple of things that really jump out for me that I'm looking at really specifically. So, uh, when we took action, um, uh, and it was not related to our liquor licenses, but it was our marijuana licenses. Uh, we were doing two things. We were focused, three things. Uh, we were focused on an individual license so that we could really look at that very specifically. Um, we were focused on the, uh, definition of the campus of a school. And, you know, and just what that meant, right? Did the field of CRM us qualify? Um, and then we were focused on, if you look at our staff memo, uh, we were focused on the statement about, um, you know, this idea of, uh, direct measurement using, um, or, uh, direct measurement using the route of direct pedestrian access, measure it as a person would walk safely, properly, without trespassing, et cetera, et cetera. And we, we, correct me if I'm wrong, we also were looking at that direct access, you know, from a property line to how they would actually enter a premises where, where someone would acquire, um, the marijuana at the time, right? And so I think, correct me if I'm wrong, we did not reduce the distance, but we started to look at the idea that a multi-use building and a multi-tenant building um, made a really big difference. So, you know, how would someone leave the CRM as property legitimately? Even if an athletic field was built right next door, et cetera. And then how would they actually get to a specific premises? So for me, um, I'm looking to to table this discussion, I think, to be able to dig in a little deeper, uh, with Mark and Tarn, um, about some of the precedents that they pulled. And the same way we did with the marijuana license, you know, what does direct route really mean? Um, if Briston were to, you know, put up a small fence that said, hey, you know, should athletic fields and things like that happen on the CRM as property? We don't want just full flow back and forth. There's a service drive back here, et cetera. We're going to put a fence and you're, you would access the entire, you know, entity of the Carbondale marketplace over here on this particular sidewalk, over here on this particular sidewalk. And then what does that legitimate direct route access really look like then to the storefronts? Whether it's City Market, uh, whether it's additional restaurants, et cetera. So I personally am looking to table this so that we can look a little more in depth as to whether if we're truly to look at things like that, do we need to make this a townwide ordinance? Or can that actually be approached on an individual liquor license? Um, also because I would really like to look at these in individual ways. I'm, you know, I'm struggling to, you know, get feedback that's related to on premises and, you know, some of our really successful local purveyors that have spoken to us tonight and off premises liquor license for City Market. Like, those are such different conversations. And I think to Erica's point, some of the feedback was definitely around, you know, uh, we just, we have a lot of people that, um, rightly so, are going to really struggle with a liquor, a full liquor license being, liquor license being granted to City Market. Um, and we know in the valley, it's, you know, it's been denied. It was denied at Whole Foods and Four Dogs is still in business and going strong. So, so that's where I guess I'm looking to table it because I think I'd like some more individual time with Mark and Tarn to, you know, better understand some other ways we might be able to slice the pie.
Thank you, Heather. As always, very thoughtful. Ben?
Uh, yeah, I, I want to thank everybody for coming and staying late with us and giving us all your perspectives on this too. And, and we have the utmost respect for all of our local business owners and everything that you contribute to this community. I think for me, this comes back to what's the purpose of the state law? And I also want to point out, somebody commented about ordinance fifteen being this historic thing in Carbondale that we've put a lot of time into. Ordinance fifteen is just what's on the table tonight. I mean, we just have the state law in place. We've never changed this. So it's not some local, you know, lot of thought into that law that we're talking about changing. We're just exercising our authority as a local municipality to alter state law if we want to make it fit our community better. So that's all we're doing is, is having that discussion. Um, but I do go back to, well, what's the purpose of the state laws distancing requirements? And it seems that the distance requirement from schools is pretty clear. It's to protect kids from sort of overexposure to, um, easy access to alcohol, right? You don't want the flashing liquor, um, get your liquor here sign right as you drive into a school, which you do get if you go to Glenwood Middle School. For some reason, there's a liquor store right on the corner there that must have predated the school. I've always wondered about that one. Um, although I don't think liquor has run rampant at that school because of it. Um, but I think that when you strip it down to that, then that, that clarifies the whole conversation. Like there are these sort of ancillary benefits to the local liquor stores of the fact that there's all these restrictions on where else you can build a liquor store, right? So then you, you get, um, you get some protection from competition. And that's what we've been talking about. So I think kind of like what Erica said is that fundamentally, that seems to be the major issue. And I don't think that reducing this, uh, the fact that you can have it next to a field that happens to be owned by a school, uh, if we were to go in that direction, um, I don't think that that poses any clear and present danger to the children in our community. Um, I really don't. Um, so I think that if we stay focused on that, it sounds like it'll be a next discussion. What's the purpose of the distancing from school? Let's make sure that we maintain that purpose in protecting kids from liquor being sold right at the entrance to their school and sort of advertising right when they're going to school and tempting them and making them think about it more and all that. Um, this location's relationship to that school property just has no chance of, of, of causing any harm in that way. And so I'm definitely open to the discussion. I think with the restaurant licenses, that's, uh, that's pretty clearly, I think, something that we should support, that they would be able to, um, be on this kind of area. It's not right on a school, um, grounds. It's got its back to a huge field of a thousand acres or whatever it is. Not a thousand acres, it's a bunch of acres. Um, and, uh, the discussion about City Market, it really does seem like a different discussion to me. It doesn't seem like it's a discussion of the threats to the school and the proximity to the school. It seems like it's a discussion of the threats to the local businesses. And that's, that's a concern and I'm not diminishing that concern, but it's a different concern than distance from a school. So I don't know exactly how we tackle that, but I feel like that's really a very separate, uh, concern. And then I, I guess the last thing I'd put in my notes is just this question of Joe White's letter. Um, I feel like if we're going to do some research for next time, I agree with Heather's direction on the, I've always been fascinated by that when I was on P and Z and everything, the way that we make these distancing requirements by pedestrian route. Um, you know, the, the law here, the state law says it's the pedestrian route to the property line of the school instead of to the actual entrance to any sort of building. And that means, you know, when you're backed up to each other, um, it, it makes you seem closer than, than the pedestrian would actually travel um, to get in and out of those buildings without jumping fences and walking through fields and all that. Um, so I, I agree with Heather's direction on doing some research on how we could maybe, um, adjust the, the language there about the direct pedestrian access. But I do want some more clarity from CRM as in a way. Uh, what I don't want is to end up, um, who the attorney who spoke seemed to suggest that there would be, you know, challenges to that. It's, that's what I, that's what I seem to hear saying that our definition in the proposed ordinance from staff and his letter kind of stand up for a, a conflict right off the bat. Um, so I think if we're going to say, you know, this would exclude passive open space, vacant land, this and that. And then Joe White says, well, we kind of use it for education and then somebody can go to court or whatever and say it like, I don't want to set ourselves up for that. So I think we need a little more clarity either in our ordinance or in the CRM as letter about, um, the use of that property and what we're excluding if we are to go in the direction of, which I do think that the purpose is from the used part of the school campus, from the buildings and the, the fields, the ball fields and things like that. Not a, a cattle pasture.
Thank you, Ben. As is often the case, I don't have much to add because you all have covered it really well. I too would have had a hard time making a decision tonight because I think it is complicated. Um, and while I happily make decisions and vote with my dollar, on a personal note, um, I don't feel it's appropriate for us to choose which businesses we want to support and which not to. So I agree with comments made that this is not about competition. This is about the intent of the law, um, and being, and applying that fairly. So I will, and I would also just say that, um, I'd be lying if I said I wasn't disappointed that some of the commentary really spoke to um, the motives of individuals, which we clearly don't know. Uh, I think everybody on this call, everybody involved in these projects are, um, working with the, the best interest in the town at, at hand. And so, uh, I always love it when we avoid making accusations about people's intent and motives. Um, but nonetheless, uh, moving on, Mark, uh, do you feel, I'm hearing three things and, um, Ben and Heather, correct me if I'm wrong, that uh, for, at least for Ben and Heather, and I would add myself to this list, to make a more informed decision, we would like more research around the direct, the direct access issue, reconciling the CRM as letter with our ordinance. And if I understood Heather correctly, maybe do we even need this ordinance and can we address it just on a liquor license basis?
Yes, I, I think I got those questions written down, if that's your question, Dan. I don't have anything else in my list. If somebody else recalls another question, then please add to the list.
Well, do you feel like it's fair and, and reasonable for us to ask you to research those, those issues? Is there, okay?
Yes, um, I do. And I, I prefer to put our, let me and Tarn put our thinking caps on and get with Jay before we respond rather than trying to do it now, if that's okay.
Yeah, of course. Okay, did any trustees, did I miss anything on that? No? Okay.
I mean, Dan, the only other thing I'd say is not a huge amount of research on this, but I would be curious what the other communities around us have done on this. Like we heard a lot of talk about what Glenwood has done tonight, but it's sort of anecdotal and not in the record. It'd be interesting to know. Have other communities in the area changed the distancing from schools or the way that they measure direct access?
I believe both are true, Ben. We can get you some details. Tarn looked into it. If I recall, Tire Ride in Glenwood were examples and there are others.
Mark, I, I would love to give, uh, leaseholders, potential leaseholders, an idea of timing. Um, so Mark and Jay, can either one of you, um, take a stab at when we might reconsider this?
Uh, this is a legislative issue. There's no noticing requirements other than getting it on your agenda 24 hours in advance of a meeting. So it's really whenever, uh, the trustees, uh, other business permits you to have time and, uh, it would help us to, uh, I, I'm not sure Thanksgiving week's going to be the best, uh, time to deal with this, if that's all right with you all, but, um, I'll defer to you.
Okay, Mark, you, uh, you went silent there, but what I'm hearing is you'd prefer to wait till the first meeting in December. Is that what I'm hearing?
If, if that works for you all, I'm going to be traveling, uh, the, the Thanksgiving week.
Okay. Jay, any thoughts on that timing?
No, we, we should have to make that work. That is our budget hearing, um, but usually that's a relatively, um, seamless process by that, that point in the, uh, the budget.
Okay. Okay, uh, I don't think we need to take any formal action. Um, again, I do want to echo, I'm always very appreciative for folks willing to offer their opinion and, um, clearly the speakers tonight have done their homework, uh, and it's clearly a complicated issue. And I appreciate, um, all the work that's gone into it and the thought in, uh, advising us. So thank you and we'll continue this. Uh, sounds like at the first meeting in December. Okay. With that, we'll move on to our final item of the night. Uh, thank you to the E-Board for being patient. Um, we have, uh, Climate and Energy Action Plan Implementation Recommendation. So I don't have the memo in front of me. I don't know if Heather, you want to introduce this or I don't think we have Mark here. Uh, looks like Collins here.
Yeah, if we can, Colin and, um, Sandy, um, should be on. Yeah, cool. Perfect. Uh, okay, um. So yeah, I, I'll do a quick intro and, um, hopefully we can move through this kind of quickly. So the E-Board, um, has really been digging into, um, I guess I'll start the fact that I'm going to assume I don't need to preach to the choir here about climate change, um, and the impacts, um, of climate change on our community. And so we're going to kind of jump right in, um, about what the E-Board has been working on. So, good, okay, perfect. So, um, with that kind of track in mind, what the E-Board has really been looking at is trying to, I, I think they started with from their perspective, wrap their arms around our climate action plan and, um, how much was in it, how much we were kind of covering when you think about all the areas that um, climate change is impacting and what kind of progress we were making. So if we had set a goal in 2050, you know, how close were we getting each year? So, uh, via a subcommittee, um, uh, chaired primarily by Sandy, uh, who's gonna, I'm going to throw the ball to here. Um, they've been working on two of the items that you saw in your packet. The first was the Excel spreadsheet, um, which at the end of the day, we can call it whatever we want. Uh, you know, they kind of called it a, you know, tracking spreadsheet. Dan and I were referencing it sort of as a work plan. At the end of the day, what, whatever we end up calling it, it's kind of an action plan. So it started to break down a lot of the items that were in the climate action plan and put them into this tracking spreadsheet. Who was working on it? And what metrics were we using and how far were we getting? The spreadsheet in your packet, I would say is like, just scratching the surface, if you use that kind of term. From that point, the E-Board started to say, hey, this is really, really useful what we do with this. So that's where the seven item like recommendations then on the first page came from. And some are directly related to that spreadsheet. Some are a little more, I don't know, bigger or address something a little bit different. The third thing that you'll see, which I'm pretty sure Jay and Renee put together, was to give this like overall picture of where and how we were spending money on climate issues. So not just strictly related to, let's say, greenhouse gas emissions, but also other things that came out of our V caps effort that we did, et cetera. And, you know, where and when are we spending money? Um, so Sandy's just gonna kind of reference or address any questions that you guys have on the seven items, but the gist of tonight is we would like to kind of get the thumbs up for two things really at the end of the day. The first is a nod from the trustees that these seven items are kind of on the right track of things that we need to be thinking about and considering as we move forward with the Climate Action Plan. Because you'll see in there how some of those seven things tie to to the actual spreadsheet. And then second really is to to talk about the budget that we have allocated. If you look at the list on page 164, right now, the energy plan on the environmental health Garfield Clean Energy Line Item and that $25,000, that is primarily the only funds that we put towards sort of tracking the cap in this very metric based way. So we we'd like to talk as a group and about some budget implications to basically double that budget to 50,000 and potentially keep in reserve, you know, even additional funds beyond that. And what that's thinking about is just with the kind of money that we're spending, are we doing the best job that we can to actually track the impacts of that money? Dig into all the baselines that are being created and look at, you know, each year, how are we doing on the metrics in all of the categories of the cap? And I think you'll see from the spreadsheet, that's what you can notice is there's a lot of things where we allocated funds to core and to clear. You know, we've made the best progress, but then we have some of these gaps. And we don't have the best like overall picture of how we're kind of tracking things. So those are the two asks for tonight. Are we on the right track? Are these seven things the right things to dig into? Our hope is, you know, right after we get through budget season, we can actually have a really robust conversation about these. And then perhaps allocating additional funds to really figure out how we do a better job, I guess, of tracking our Climate Action Plan. So Sandy, I told her to assume that we all read the packet and would, you know, entertain, she can do a little introduction of how we got to where we are and then entertain any questions on the seven recommendations and the spreadsheet, but not necessarily like getting into it really in depth, but more just at a higher level, some of those questions. I promised Dan we wouldn't go down too many rabbit holes and given it's nine, 10, we definitely don't want to. So I will toss it to Sandy.
Thanks, Heather. Welcome, Sandy. Thanks for being patient. And Sandy, you just need to unmute yourself. There you go.
All right, great. Thanks, guys. Heather really said a lot of what I was thinking of. So I'm not going to repeat all of that. She did a great job of summarizing it. And as she said, I assume that you've read the memo that we prepared and our recommendations. And as she said, the goal tonight was not to really dive into the details, but to get a feel for if the trustees feel like these are the right sort of recommendations, we're on the right path, get some budget allocated for it and maybe agree on a timeframe where we can do a more detailed discussion. So if everyone has looked at it, if I'm happy to answer any questions or listen to any of your, any of your thoughts.
Thanks, Sandy. What would you say your top two priorities are in this? Like, what do you? What's not working that you want to fix?
Well, I think the hardest part for us was to get a handle on one place where all of these different cap items could be looked at and viewed in a summary form. You know, a lot of projects are done by town staff, some are done by clear and core, but there wasn't one place we could go to look at all of it. So I think that monitoring and maintaining a spreadsheet is is very, very important because that keeps our focus on all these tasks that we can see as Heather said, what's getting left behind, what's getting worked on, what isn't. I think somehow maintaining that, keeping that current is really important. And I guess the other, the other priorities that we are recommendations that we mapped out. I guess, well, we think they're all important. I would say prioritizing the items into what's the most effective way to reduce emissions. I mean, that's the bottom line. That's the goal, is reducing emissions. And a lot of these things are, they're great concepts, all of these different ideas in the cap, but they're not all equal. And I think having a prioritization as to what is going to give us the most bang for our buck is probably the second most important thing.
Thank you.
I think the, in in that piece around, like, you know, it's been hard to look at something in total and understand where where we were at. To me, part of the key to that too is as a board, having the best understanding we possibly can about the impacts of the money that we're spending. And really be being able to look at that in whole and in total and, you know, look at the cost benefit analysis of the areas where we're spending money. And because not everything is emissions related, some is water resource related, et cetera, like when you look at the the page around the money we're spending, that's okay. But I don't, I certainly don't feel like we're as conscious as we could be about the discussions around that and where the best bang for the buck is.
Right. Okay. Colin, and I know you've got some other committee members here. Any other comments to add?
Yeah, thanks, Dan. This is Colin. So Colin Quinn, I live at 239 Chris Road in Carbondale. I'll be real quick realizing it's 9:15 here, but to answer your question, what I think the most important recommendation here is, I agree with what Sandy and and Heather were saying, but when we tackled this, what we noticed is we can't really track our progress towards our goals. So and I think when we, when you people make plans like these, one of the biggest complaints is, you know, you have a plan, but it's hard to say if it's effective and it's hard to say what actions it leads to. Clearly, our town does a lot on reducing emissions, and I think that's highlighted by some of the stuff that's in the packet. And some of the stuff that we all know that's going on. But without tracking our progress towards our goals, and those goals are pretty explicit in the in the in the Climate Action Plan, I think it's hard to say that we're achieving what we set out to achieve in 2017. So I think that's the most important one for me.
One of the reasons I asked the question is, you know, we've all been, we've all either created or or tried to follow a lot of these plans and, you know, this one's now I mean, really, it was created even more than three years ago. So I want to keep our eye on the ball of reducing our impacts to climate change. I've no, we've all been thinking a lot about it and I don't feel a commitment to necessarily follow every goal on the Climate Action Plan. I want to do, I want to move the biggest lever. And so I also want to be cautious of, while I agree with the concept and I agree, Sandy, that we need having specific tasks and a dashboard to keep us on track are important. I also don't think we have to track all of them if there's a few priorities that rise to the top. So I really just want us, you know, we're kind of moving into crisis mode and let's focus on where that biggest lever is. It's just kind of what I want to keep in mind as opposed to monitoring and tracking all of them to say that we are tracking progress on all of them, you know? I want us to be effective as efficient as possible. So that would be my comment off the cuff. Any other thoughts from trustees? Okay, it's it's clearly late. Erica, go for it.
Thanks, you guys. And thanks for compiling all of the the feedback on the cap. And I think this came directly from the meeting that we all had in August. I can't remember. So I really appreciate, I know it was a ton of work for the E-Board to wrangle all of the comments. I think whenever anybody, having been a major part of putting together the plan, we the component of creating, you know, ways to measure or even projections for the most bang for the buck, honestly taken in at a pretty insane amount of resources to do that kind of analysis is what we learned in that process. And we can look at City of Aspen and their Climate Action Plan and they have way more resources than the town of Carbondale does to be able to put in those efforts. And so I've always actually learned from a wise man named Dan Richardson, back when I was creating the first, you know, commercial retrofit and rebate program in 2010. At first, we were going to put all these resources into getting a commercial business the best assessment. So they have a full plan of what they would need to save energy. And then at the time, Dan was helping run a statewide program that was giving out grants for these things. And he said, well, do you want to put money into the plan or do you want to put money into helping that business make a big difference? And actually get a project done. And, you know, it really helped me rethink it. And sure enough, businesses didn't want like a full plan. They needed to know the easy, quick things they could do to start making a difference. And so I think I would just be hesitant for us. We definitely need to figure out some ways to check in on this overall plan and make sure there's some, you know, big picture. There's, are there some of the local food and waste items that we do need to, you know, somebody, it needs to be delegated to somebody to look into and are those going to make a big difference? But if we shuffle a whole lot of resources into tracking all those things, kind of like what Dan just said, then are we going to have resources? Because we have a pretty small budget relative to our partners to implement some projects and make some progress towards things, whether that's on our own facilities or, you know, whatever the big lever is that we all, you know, might be looking for. And we could talk about it more in the next step of what what is like the middle approach? Because I'm sure we can get there. You guys are all really smart. But I'm just hesitant to only focus resources and to create a big budget to to track things.
Can I answer a couple of things, Dan? And then Brittany had her hand up?
Yes, ma'am.
Cool. So to I really appreciate both of those comments and I I guess to kind of both in the seven things that the E-Board has recommended. It's, you know, I almost hear both of you talking about number three, like that because we created this list, we don't have to necessarily go too far yet to like allocate all these resources to that. Like, we focus on number three first, but we look at that spreadsheet as a big picture of everything that was in there. And at least at first pass, where do we think the best bang for the buck is? And then second, just in in our request and in kind of thinking about how to allocate, you know, instead of 25,000, the good comparison is that we're now holding 50,000 in the budget for affordable housing for next year. We don't quite know what that's going to look like. You know, I don't know whether we're going to be able to pick up the multi-jurisdictional, you know, housing kind of partnership program that we had talked about. My my hope is yes. The need hasn't gone away. So so it's so it's kind of a similar thing. And I think pretty much all of the E-Board is going to agree with exactly what you said, Erica, like we don't say, let's spend that all on like planning and tracking and managing a spreadsheet. But but where's the balance between potentially allocating some more money to some of those things that we have set are a priority and clearly targeted towards emission reduction? And then what could could be allocated to helping us kind of track and manage our priorities as we move forward? So it's kind of our, at least what we've been talking about as a group.
Thanks, Heather. Brittany, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, thank you.
Let's try it again.
Sorry, we have too many microphones in our room.
And Brittany, if you would.
Just really quickly, I just wanted to say, you know, the E-Board, I'm well aware of help worked with Dan briefly in Aspen, but then went on and developed climate action plans at universities and did greenhouse gas inventories and stuff like that afterwards. They take a lot of time. They take more time than anyone has any idea of tracking and gathering that data and doing the analysis. So I don't think that is what the E-Board has been asking for is is digging all of those resources into that. A big part of this was the E-Board was asked to come up with recommendations from the cap. That was pretty specific direction. And feeling once we kind of delved in and I helped serve on that 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 commissioner committee and once we delved in, we just realized how little information was there. The cap had clearly a ton of information put into it. And Erica and Phi and others gave a ton of time just to try to update us on on some of it and it was great. But I think that's really where we're asking for just a little more information and being the public and or the E-Board, just having that information a little bit more available, just just like Erica said and just like Heather said. It's not about tracking this incessantly, but if we're going to have the cap of having an idea of kind of what we're getting through on it, but yeah, I think all of us would agree completely with, let's find the biggest levers and let's let's find those and and agree with Dan completely on that.
Thanks, Brittany. And I think, you know, it is getting late, so we probably should wrap this up. I suspect we're all pretty much on the same wavelength here. And I do think it's a great role for the E-Board to not only scrutinize our climate plan and help the board and the town as a whole stay focused, but to keep that fire under our biscuits to keep things going. So I I really like how this is evolving. And I think, like I said, it's a good role for the E-Board. And I think we all agree, we want a user-friendly dashboard to keep us accountable and we just have to find that sweet spot of monitoring and action. So.
Yeah, I think just the only word of caution back to what Erica had talked about, I mean, even just this 5% step we took in the spreadsheet that you guys see was a tremendous amount of time and resources. So I think one of the things that the E-Board wants to be pretty clear about is part of the very first discussion we need to have is if that kind of dashboard makes sense, if this discussion around priorities, et cetera, is who does own this? And I personally don't think that if we're to do this appropriately and with enough, you know, care about where we're spending our resources and that discussion around bang for the buck, et cetera. I don't think that that's something you can put on the E-Board. I think they can champion and be the liaison with who's responsible for that. But as a you know, volunteer board, I just think we need to be careful when you pick up the discussion on those seven items that, you know, we wouldn't plop that work plan or the dashboard on to the E-Board. I that's my personal opinion. I think that would be the E-Board's opinion, so.
Good point. Erica?
Well, I was going to say maybe as part of the discussion is, because like Dan said, I mean, it's 2017, but it's really based on 2016 data. A lot of it was, it was like wrapped up in 2017. And things have changed since then. I mean, you'll notice air source heat pumps are not mentioned in there. They weren't. And things have changed since then. I mean, you'll notice air source heat pumps are not mentioned in there. They weren't really a technology that was that, you know, that was proving viable yet. So there's going to be other innovations and changes or just updates that we can make and new paths that people are taking. And so I don't think it's necessarily a full rewrite unless people really want to go for that. But I do think updating the dates to the 2040 instead of 2050 is worth talking about and figuring out a way to incorporate new ideas. So it's not just checking in on these four-year-old ideas as well. I think that would be worthwhile.
Heather, just final thoughts from me on what you said. I've heard the E-Board saying, we want to be more involved. We want to be more proactive with climate. So I guess my thought is, I would like to empower them as much as they're willing to to do, but if we're asking them to do too much, then you're right. We need to find a different path. So. Okay. Any other comments before Sandy, do you feel like this is good guidance?
Thank you. Yes. Yes, I do. I mean, it's good to hear that everyone has looked at this and thought through it and has ideas about, you know, how to prioritize this and how to keep tabs on it. And, you know, we threw out some ideas to you that we put together and recommended, but that's exactly what we wanted, was your input and your thoughts on it as well. And as Heather said, definitely didn't plan to do a deep dive on details today. But I think all these things that y'all are bringing up are exactly what we need to talk about in more depth at another time.
Great. Well, I really appreciate you putting the time and effort into it. I know there's a lot of, as Heather said, there's probably tens, if not hundreds of hours. So thank you. And we appreciate it. And all right, with that, I'll ask the board, we'll move on. Thank you, Colin, Sandy, Brittany and Heather.
Jay's raising his hand.
Yeah, just a real quick thing, since we're down the days and making adjustments to the budget, there was a proposal here to increase that spending up to 50,000. And if we're going to make that adjustment, I need to have Renee do that on Thursday.
I skipped that. I'm sorry, Jay, where?
The line item in your budget is, this isn't in the memo other than what I just referenced. It's on page 165. It says, "Energy Plan Environmental Health Garfield Clean Energy, 25,000." So it's the line item in the budget itself, the draft budget. I don't have it right in front of me, but it basically is under the environmental health and it says energy plan. And it's 25,000. So what we'd like to do is increase that budget to 50,000, whether that goes entirely to like Garfield Clean Energy, you know, or we're using that as this kind of bucket so that once we dig in further into this conversation with the E-Board on those seven items, plus some of the things that we've talked about tonight, we just have a more robust budget to play with if it becomes appropriate to do so. So that's what Jay needs to know is, Jay, maybe you have that right in front of you, but it's under environmental health and it's called energy plan.
Okay. And Jay, it's fair to assume that with as far along in the process as we are, you'd be you'd be Robin Peter to pay Paul to make this happen?
Yeah, I mean, we'll be continuing to adjust revenues and I'd have to sit down with Renee on it. Another thing to, you know, as Ben mentioned earlier tonight, we've got money from one pot, which, you know, would have been offsetting another. We did in this year's budget not include the, it used to be 25,000 and then it went down to 15,000 in the utility side of things for the core membership. So our overall spending on kind of that umbrella energy reduction efforts has kind of reduced over time, more of a factor of what services were being offered by the nonprofits that we were contracting with, in this case, Core. So you know, we have dropped that over time. And if we need to raise that, robbing Peter Pay Paul is somewhat accurate, but you know, our goal is to keep that deficit spending to the amount of transfer into the capital fund. And I think we can absorb 25 in there, but then we'd be, I think we're at about 474 or 475 right now on that amount.
Well, I certainly am supportive of, and I, you know, I thought it would be appropriate to reallocate the core membership to clean energy. So I'm certainly okay with reallocating that to this effort, or at least to, yeah. At this point, creating an allowance that we would decide on later. I don't know how the rest of the board feels. 15, 25, nothing? Anybody feel strongly either way?
Put our money where our mouth is. That's all I'm saying.
Okay. So I'm not hearing anybody say anything, Jay. So it sounds like if you could look to find 15 to 25,000, we wouldn't be opposed to it. So.
Well, I'll work with Renee on that on Thursday. Thanks.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Heather, for catching us on that. Okay. Any questions on minutes or anything for Jay before we adjourn? Sounds like everybody's going to be able to be at the next meeting.
And next week, it's community requests.
Has everybody submitted?
Marty is tardy and Heather's doing hers as we speak.
Perhaps.
We'll get it in. We don't want to ask Renee to be doing that at the 11th hour. So.
She'll get it tomorrow.
Okay. And Marty, you retired. What's your excuse?
I was out of town until Saturday at 11 o'clock.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. Have a good night. Good meeting.
Thanks.
Thanks, you guys.